Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, September 15th, 2014. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of the September 2nd, 2014 minutes. Is there a motion made by Mr. Powell, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi? Any corrections? Vice Chair Barnes.
Thank you. We're going to start on page four, line 172. And it's a very good edit. Ms. Catherine Hansberry has been married and now she's sabati. We are on to page five, line 217. And I think what we want to say, Bill Byron, from Health Trust, because that's the name of the organization, instead of of the, so strike of the, please. Page nine, lines 384 through 385. Beginning with Reed's Ferry, just to clarify, I'll just read the whole thing. Vice Chair Barnes asked about the Reed's Ferry building compared in age to the Reed's Ferry, or Thornton's Ferry building, as there's a gap by a number of years for their roof replacement schedules. And actually, we need to backtrack a bit to line 369. And I believe it was, the track is definitely a priority, not the field. Cross them off your list. We're going to go on to page 13. My pages stuck together, I apologize. There we go. We're going to start with line 555. It's just a typographical error. High school bleachers, it says bleaches, which is how they say it in Boston, bleaches. And we're going to 589 on that same page. She emailed Business Administrator Chevanel, comma, Merrimack Middle School Principal Wolfline, comma, and Superintendent Chaffrey. And those are my edits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
I just have one, and Shannon, I want you to keep me honest here. On page six, line 275, it says, "Vice Chair Barnes asked how much money was spent last year on the roofing projects." I think you mean on roofing repairs.
Yes.
That is an accurate statement, you are still honest.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Any other corrections? Seeing none, I have, oh, Ms. Gualyumi.
It's on page 12, line 522. It says, "Board Member Gualyumi, for clarity, stated that we are incorporating more methodology and more tools to reach the given standards for our grade level, to meet the higher standards." And I thought I understood that to be less of a focus on the common core as the total solution, but more as aligning specific tools to standards and grade level requirements.
Any others? All right. A lot of mine had been caught. Page two, line 77, another typographical error. The word exiting should be existing. Then on page six of 14, line 243, in this section, Chairman Ortega thanked Mr. Grignier and the committee for their report. Seems like a cut and paste issue. On line 260, the same page, if we could change the wording, "The SIP was reviewed by the Planning and Building Committee," to "The SIP was approved by the Planning and Building Committee." And then on the next line, line 261, will be reviewed and ultimately approved, if we could add "by the school board," to be clear about who's doing what when. On page seven, line 290, if we could just clarify that the longer list of roof replacement plans showing projects six or more years in the future, if we could add those words. Knew I had another, hold on. Maybe they were all caught. And I think they were all caught. So that's all that I had. So seeing, since we've made those amendments, all those in favor of accepting the September 2nd, 2014 minutes as amended signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? That motion carries 5-0-0. And I would like to welcome back, for the first time this school year, our student representative, Ms. Kira Crowley. We're happy to have you back. Hope you had a nice summer. That takes us now to item number three on tonight's agenda, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the standing microphone there, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to address the board under public participation? Can you try speaking up just a little bit more, Ms. Merchant? Much better.
I know that the event that took place, our voting day, also involves the town using our facility. However, I have a concern, after having sat in the cafeteria at Mascollo Elementary School for 30-plus minutes with 100 to 110 4th graders in a real lockdown situation, it really brings security and safety to our students to my, right to my forefront. On voting day, I observed the doors out of the cafeteria at the upper elementary school opened. I did approach the assistant principal at one point, and the doors were closed for a while. Upon returning to the building, as my job requires me to, the one door was again opened, at which point I was very frustrated and did contact the superintendent's office. The lady I spoke with was very helpful and said she would get in contact with the assistant principal. About a half an hour, 40 minutes later, the door is still open. I again contacted the soup's office. I was informed they were waiting on a phone call from the principal. When I left the building at 1:15, 1:20, I was so frustrated and scared for those kids because we're giving an open invitation, I did go over to the soup's office. Later in the day, Ms. Chaffrey very nicely called me and allayed some of my fears. But I feel like if we have a building that's supposed to be secured when the children are in it, those doors should not have been opened. I also have a concern where, as an employee of the school district, I'm fingerprinted and background-checked. The children are kept away from the public for safety. I don't know about these town volunteers that do the polls, but if we're not supposed to be mingling, why are they allowed to go down to where the children are being served their lunch for them to get lunch? Also, when the buses come in, yes, there's a police officer there, but the children are coming in the same door as the public. I just feel like there's like some kind of double standard going here. And yes, I do know there was police officers at two different areas, there was also a police officer outside. However, when he was there, he was facing Babu'sik Lake Road, anybody and their brother could have walked in that door. The other part that concerned me after the fact was when I went to vote, if that door needed to be closed in a hurry, it was tied open to the dumpster. So I just feel like, as a former parent of students, that on voting day, maybe we need to revisit it and not have school on that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merchant. Is there anyone else looking to address the board under public participation? Seeing none, I'll close public participation, and we will move to item number four, acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000. Business Administrator Matt Chevanel.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have from the Health Trust, a gift of $100. The funds will be used for district wellness initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chevanel. Is there a motion? Vice Chair Barnes.
I move we accept the gift of $100 from Health Trust with our thanks.
Thank you. And seconded quickly by Mr. Schneider and Ms. Gualyumi. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the $100 gift from Health Trust signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 5-0-0 with our thanks. And that takes us to item number five on tonight's agenda, the consent agenda. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you. There's one item on consent tonight, teacher nomination, Maggie Croto, health teacher at Merrimack Middle School.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Powell.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That also carries 5-0-0. Thank you. And that takes us to item number six, Merrimack Middle School Intersection Development, Chestnut Hill Properties. I would invite to the table, Mr. Ken Clinton and Mr. Steve Keach. And I don't know, Business Administrator Chevanel, if you'd like to give a little bit of background?
Yeah, this is because of a 71-lot subdivision that's adjacent to the middle school property on the southerly side of the lot. There needs to be an access road going down that property, down the hill onto Old Blood Road, so it connects up to our circle that we have, where the buses go by, and then it would connect up to Wilson Hill Road. In the past, the board has been looked at positively to having a second egress from the school in case something were to be blocking Babu'sik Lake, not Babu'sik Lake, but Madeline Bennett Lane. And this is kind of the fruition of that, and these are the plans to serve the subdivision and to also give us a secondary egress. I do have on my computer a larger picture of that that I could project if you would like, everybody else to see that.
Probably be hopeful for the folks in the, in attendance, as well as the folks at Well, thank you, both gentlemen, for coming tonight. While you pull that up, Mr. Chevanel, does it make sense for Mr. Clinton to perhaps describe the project, the need for the road, and the proposed plans?
I'd be happy to.
I think silence is affirmation there.
For the record, my name is Ken Clinton with Meridian Lee and Services, here on behalf of Old Blood Properties LLC, who is the developer, the entity seeking the subdivision. And I'll speak rather loudly, if I could, I just want to give everybody a point of reference. While I appreciate Matt having that digital image called up on the screen, because that's a lot more high-tech than I have with me this evening, just so everybody can sense the relationship of the Madeline Bennett Lane, the school, and the proposed subdivision. This plan is oriented so north is up the page, and Madeline Bennett comes in, Babu'sik Lake Road up in this corner, the school is located here with the ball fields out back. To the south is about 200 acres of land, about eight different tax map parcels, and that property has been under consideration for a subdivision for a period of close to 10 years. The first phase actually was a three-lot subdivision. And although it's gone through several different iterations as far as stops and starts with previous design consultants, my company received the project just about a year ago, and were asked to see the final design through fruition and conclusion. And in doing so, we had a couple of different access configurations to consider. Ultimately, we came to a conclusion through town boards, staff, commissions, et cetera, on a simpler design than what you currently have before you. During the process, we had opportunities to meet with Matt Chevanel, several other people that are connected with the school district, most notably in association with Traffic Safety Committee. And we understood there were some outstanding concerns that the SAU had, and they requested that we consult with Steve Keach, who they hired to review our work to see if there was some middle ground or some expanded design that we could consider. And quite frankly, this is the plan that we arrived at, that Matt has on the screen. To that end, we addressed the primary concerns of the buses stopping as they were exiting, because that was one of our initial designs where the buses would stop, come to a stop condition for safety, as they left the school driveway and entered onto Madeline Bennett. Secondly, there was a question about the buses. In the middle school, they staged, they have two different waves of buses, roughly split up, 16 to 18 buses each. In this particular design, we've modified Madeline Bennett where it's currently a three-lane road, the central lane being for emergency access, since it's a very long dead end. We've made the two southerly lanes the primary travel lanes. Obviously, on the right, the middle lane, as it's currently configured, would be the road towards the school, and then on to the south into the subdivision. Obviously, the road, the lane to the south is the exit lane all the way out to Babu'sik Lake Road. I wasn't loud enough? First time you've ever even told that. And then, what we've done with the northernmost lane, to accommodate the need for bus queuing, stacking up and staging the buses, is we've used what now is currently the travel lane as a shoulder to stack the buses in this configuration here. And we show the beginning of this 16-bus queue, starting about 150 feet from what we have determined is the best alternative for the cul-de-sac to become a roundabout or rotary, depends on where you come from, you call it different things. In short, this roundabout is the key feature, and that allows buses leaving the school to not have to stop and create somewhat added time for each bus that comes down to stop, is a little bit extra time that ticks off the clock, and that could conceivably lead to some delays. So as a bus leaves the school, it enters the roundabout, as it allows, safe traffic allows, and then off to Babu'sik Lane they go, or conceivably, if it makes more sense from a routing standpoint, which I certainly can't speak to here, they could head to the south through the subdivision, and ultimately out to Wilson Hill Road, if that makes a better configuration for the bus routing. Coming into the school, there's another added feature, where you now have a single entrance lane that splits, and the so-called parent drop-off lane veers to the right. Well, that's a bottleneck as you enter into the school. What we're proposing we can do is widen that, so it's two entrance lanes. The rightmost lane will still continue to be the parent drop-off, but it will allow full access and then right turn-in, where the middle lane can be the central lane that goes all the way to the front door, the majority of the buses obviously would take that, and they'd stage around the school. So this addresses the SAU concerns in both the non-stop condition here at this roundabout, as well as providing for the bus stacking to occur in what will be called a shoulder, a paved shoulder. At both the entrance to the school on Madeline Bennett Lane, as well as down on the relocated portion of Old Blood Road, we will install the flashing standard 20 mile an hour school signs with flashing lights. I was very surprised as I was taking a look at the overall traffic patterns of the school and the signage in particular, just to see a singular yellow sign noting that there was a school somewhere down in the distance. And so obviously, as a, now a connector road that ultimately would lead through a subdivision all the way down to Wilson Hill Road, we will install those as part of our work. And if you need an example, although it was light out, you could see the one right across the street in front of the cemetery that has the solar panel on it, too. And so we're proposing signs identical to those, and I do have the specs on those. Obviously, we've gone back and forth through Steve and through Matt's office quite a bit in the preparation of this plan, we're hopeful they concur with this current design. And quite frankly, we're here before the board to humbly request that we've received some level of endorsement, so as we move forward through the remainder of the town process, that we can say that, yes, we do indeed have, hopefully, some level of support from the board itself. That's all for my comments, unless, I mean, I can answer any questions you have, be happy to turn it over to Steve, and he can share some of his thoughts if he thinks it's appropriate.
Right.
So I'm at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you. Before I turn it over, I see hands going up, before I turn it over to the board, I was hoping you could answer a couple of questions of mine. And the first is the need for this road. You mentioned emergency vehicles, and I'm wondering, there are other roads in town, some actually on our property, others just around town, that have an access road with a gate for emergency vehicles to get up and down in the event of an emergency, but a full-blown intersection is not necessarily there for the general public.
Sure.
What is the requirement for this road to actually be an intersection as opposed to a locked emergency gate?
That is actually, that requirement is directed upon us by the planning board. They dictated that they wanted to see a full-through road on this.
Okay.
And indeed, it's primarily, if not exclusively, from a safety standpoint, and they did see that it benefited the school to eliminate the school's own dead-end issue.
Okay. And then, my other question before I open it up to the board, besides seeking our endorsement, one of the things about this road is, or proposed road, is that it runs through a conservation easement, the agreement of which, if I understand it properly, would have to be modified on our part in order to allow the road to go through. Are you seeking that?
I don't have the same understanding, Mr. Chairman, as far as the need to modify the provisions that were done in the 2005 Conservation Commission easement. It provided or allowed for the realignment and upgrade of the road. As far as I understand, and I believe town staff has concurred that this is within the meaning of that language. I'm not an attorney, however, I would certainly hope that the board would consider that a reasonable location for the road, given the constraints, the terrain. We looked at it from a wetland impact standpoint, impacts to the butters on Mary Meeting Drive as well, so we factored in all of the constraints and impacts, and this is the best and most logical position for that road to be realigned and upgraded.
With that, I will open it up to the board. I'll start with Vice Chair Barnes.
First, I have a question for you regarding the bus staging area that you designed, or the shoulder, as you were calling it. How do you envision buses that are parked in that area to merge into traffic?
I would say the same way they do now. Currently, as they stop at the cul-de-sac, they, the first bus there, they just line up behinds, one behind the other, and as the last bus comes out of the school from the first wave, they simply enter traffic and go on into the school. There's no other traffic mechanism for us that would be, could be installed to change that pattern. This is a problem, if you will, that the school has, that it doesn't have the internal space to store all the buses that need to come pick up the kids and then go to other schools and or areas in town. We looked at several different alternatives, one being trying to modify the parking area at the entrance of the ball field at the corner of Babu'sik Lake Road. That was deemed insufficient. So this is the best, most suitable location for this, however, it's not entirely perfect.
No, and that's where, you know, where you're saying it's happening already, it's not, because we have traffic lights that ebb and flow, you know, cars and buses into a hybrid environment. One thing I've heard over and over is the caterpillar effect. So when one bus can move and another bus moves, well, cars don't move, because it can't get between, they don't merge in between buses necessarily. So that's where I look at, if buses are merging from a parked status into a traffic-flow status toward that circle, then I'm waiting for every bus in your staged area to get into the flow if they all decide to go at the same time, and that could put, in my mind, correct me if I'm wrong, backup of actual vehicles.
Well, to your opening comments, the traffic light is not, at Babu'sik Lake Road is what you're speaking of.
At Babu'sik Lake and Madeline Bennett, yes.
That's not going to be removed, that still will be there.
Correct.
And as far as the duration or the frequency of the buses leaving that location, it happens once per day in the middle of the afternoon, when you could say that the traffic use by the public would be rather low. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, if you feel that's not appropriate.
Okay. My second question is, with these enhancements, I believe Madeline Bennett right now is school district-owned, and what happens to Madeline Bennett when these modifications go into effect?
Well, Madeline Bennett, you're correct, is not an accepted public road, it's maintained by the town. It's actually partly on townland, partly on right-of-way that could be construed to either be owned by the town and/or the school district, based on our research. Certainly, it's been modified to miss or have lower impact to wetlands that historically had existed. So in that mix, we propose that we'll have enough improvements on Madeline Bennett Lane in conjunction with the repair of the sewer, which is a big part of why Madeline Bennett Lane is not accepted, from what I understand, that it will then, all of the differences of the sewer, plus the upgrades of Madeline Bennett Lane, would be a fully acceptable public right-of-way.
And therefore, it's not the responsibility of the school district, correct?
At that point, it would be the town of Merrimack, as opposed to the school district.
And you just segued and hinted at my next question, which is the sewage system, and obviously, right now, that's the property of the school district. With these modifications, would that also become property of the town of Merrimack? And therefore, the responsibility of the town to maintain?
The requirement of this subdivision is to be on public sewer, to be on public sewer, that line, that section that's deficient has to be repaired to the satisfaction of the town, and I understand if it's fixed to the satisfaction of the town, it then becomes acceptable that they could take that over as well.
And the cost of all these enhancements, the bus parking, all of this, I assume that there'll be no expectation of financial contribution by the district?
No.
And the other question about the 20 mile per hour flashing light, that will also not be the responsibility of the district?
That's correct, it will not.
And I guess the final question I have for you, and I just, I'm not sure I got the answer that I understood, or maybe, maybe it's not the one I was looking for. You're looking for our endorsement, but you don't feel you need our permission? What if we say no? What happens to the plan?
We're seeking your endorsement because some of these improvements affect how the school operates, and you as the school board have the ultimate authority to that. However, within the language of the easement deed, it gives the discretion, as far as I understand, to the town engineer, if he feels, or she, depending on the person and position, if they feel that it is required, if it's the route that best serves the public. That, as Chairman Ortega inferred, could be open to interpretation. So instead of trying to, pardon the phrase, have the lawyers come into this and go at it, it seems very logical for us to come before the board, through the SAU's engineering consultant, and say, "This is what we feel is reasonable to pursue," and we'd be hopeful that the school board would recognize that, and act in good faith, as we have tried to do, in trying to come up with the best solution, fix as many of these problems as we can, not to say, once again, that everything's perfect, but it's an existing condition that we inherited, just as much as some, you could say, the middle school has inherited. So in that sense, yes, we're asking for some, as much of a level of endorsement. So in that sense, yes, we're asking for some, as much of a level of endorsement and support as you feel is appropriate.
Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powell.
Thank you. Most of my questions were addressed by Mrs. Barnes. Right now, where do the students board the buses and how would that change with this new configuration?
I understand they board the buses in several locations around the middle school, and this would not change that one bit.
Okay. So this is basically truly a staging area and not a boarding area?
Correct.
Okay. How much traffic do you anticipate coming through that intersection?
We don't have a traffic analysis that I can give you, cars per day. All I can relate is that when we discussed this with town staff, most notably Tim Thompson and Kyle Fox, it was deemed unnecessary to go to that level of review, since they felt the volumes were very low. Perhaps, Steve, if you want to comment on that, you're welcome to as well.
Okay. Do you have any feeling for what it would be, Mr. Cage?
Volumetrically, in a location such as this, during the design hour volume, what everything should be designed to, is the school.
Okay.
And will continue to be the school. The traffic volume that would be anticipated to be generated by the proposed subdivision over a twenty-four-hour day, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, trip generation manual would be nine point five seven vehicle trips per day. A trip per day, if you run to the post office and return home is two trips. So call it ten, Davis, and what, seventy?
Seven.
Yeah. So seven hundred and ten, or seven hundred trips would be added to the matrix. Obviously, some will distribute to Wilson Hill, and some will distribute to Babusick Lake Road directly via Madeline Bennett. But that's over a twenty-four-hour average weekday condition. When we focus on residential neighborhoods from a transportation standpoint, you're basically looking at one trip per dwelling unit during each of the AM and PM peak hours. The peak hour of operation for the school is going to probably overlap slightly with a portion of the peak hour from the neighborhood. During the PM peak hour, there won't be any overlap because clearly the middle of the afternoon. So when, the condition that served to drive the design of this, and quite frankly, was the concern of your administrative staff that brought me into the equation here, I'm not really concerned about the volume of traffic. I'm concerned about the volume of traffic that you see on the illustration that Ken has put before you tonight, with the queuing of the buses between the first wave and the second wave, and the interaction of school-bound or school-departing traffic with parent pickup. And this is precisely why Ken and I, when we sat down to talk this through, I brought back to the table the concerns that Matt had shared with me, that Richie Desmond had shared with Matt, and hence find their way to me. And by having those two inbound lanes, one for the buses to park on and get out of the way, obviously, there'd be no impediment to outbound traffic. But I've heard that the term Matt used at the first time we talked about it, a slow-moving caterpillar, and that's really what they are. Once those buses start to roll and move in to pick up the second wave of students, they're going to continue in that fashion. They're going to go occupy the slots around the periphery of the school and pick up at the various locations as they do today. That area that you see crosshatched between the last bus, yeah, right above the word Madeline, is kind of a no-man's land. They will be able to drive on that, but no, they won't park on that. And what that is, is you're going to have naturally a weaving, today you've got a weaving movement out there between the buses parked on the shoulder and inbound vehicles of the general public, parents generally picking up their kids. And this design that Ken has come up with will eliminate that weaving pattern. Moreover, to the west of where the roundabout would be, there's a constriction now, and you can see it illustrated in the dash line, yeah, right through there, that forces all the traffic into a single lane before they disperse to go to the parent drop-off pickup area and to move through. And part of the proposal will be to eliminate that restriction so that once vehicles, whether they be cars or buses, make it through the roundabout, they don't have to redistribute. Cars to the right, buses to the left. The idea, and maybe some of this was founded in the fact that I was a parent of two children that went there, was out of observation over a period of about four years, right?
Observation or frustration?
I don't know. Call it a little of each, depending upon the day, what kind of day I was having, and whether the Red Sox won or lost, I guess. But the reality is, is I think that will help those movements a lot, because, you know, naturally, when the buses start to roll, they're going to assume the right-of-way. You know, they'll do their block, lock-and-barge technique for that five minutes, and they'll go through. I think part of the reason, after I understood from Matt the concerns and why Ken and I worked together and came up with the solution, is there's a couple of things beyond which Ken mentioned that I felt were important. One is the other twenty-three and a half hours a day. Obviously, the intent, as it has been since before the middle school was constructed, was ultimately for Madeline Bennett Road to be a Class Five town road operated as a any other highway. Yet, there's always going to be a school there, isn't there? And their school functions happen after hours, many different types of situations. And having a roundabout there, I think, will create sort of a traffic calming device, so that everybody who approaches it, regardless of direction, has to decelerate and go through there at a reasonable rate of speed. If you roll out of the middle school on the way out an afternoon such as this, say this hour, right now, you know, there's not too many people out there. You're going to accelerate coming down the hill to where the current cul-de-sac is, and you're going to come driving out, as you would, I suppose, on any other town road, thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. This will slow that traffic down at the entrance to the school and kind of create an obstacle, a recognition that there's something different happening here than there is down the road a half a mile in any direction. I like that. The, but what I like the most about the design is how vehicles will have to operate in that area. Again, it'll be a traffic calming measure that will be there, not just for the twenty minutes to an hour a day for a hundred and eighty days a year when the school is in operation, but also the balance of the time because of the other school functions that will occur. It will isolate and segregate what is school, the middle school site driveway, and what is an open road at the end of the day. And I think that's important. And I think from an operations standpoint, numerically, you started the question of volumes. Anytime that you, whatever the volume is, when we analyze an intersection, we look at it from as a measure of delay using a measuring stick called volume-to-capacity ratio. Any intersection has a certain capacity that it can accommodate. And in general, a rule of thumb is, your volume-to-capacity ratio is, or your capacity is increased by somewhere between a factor of one point five and two with a roundabout, as opposed to a standard T or cross-shaped intersection. In this particular instance, what Matt's concerned primarily was, was delay. Eliminating, increasing volume-to-capacity ratio increases the level of service and minimizes the level of delay. And that's primarily what Ken's design is doing for you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. That answered quite a few questions that I had in the back of my mind. Without a traffic study being done, I understand, was there any consideration to traffic that finds out that this alternative route to Babusick Lake Road is open off of Wilson Hill instead of having to make the left turn from Wilson Hill onto McQuestion? And this avoids that stop sign?
Not numerically, but that was one of the things that I was concerned about. And Ken, can you show them the overall?
And the reason, the reason I bring that up is because that is, there's going to be high schoolers that are going to be utilizing that at the same time that we have our AM, you know, peak.
Yeah. This is the largest plot that we have available tonight. And once again, this is Madeline Bennett Lane with the school located here, the subdivision, Old Blood Road, which then comes out to Wilson Hill, which then goes to McQuestion. And this question that you seem to be leading to about a cut-through, would it be used as a cut-through? And the amount of stops and delays to come through Old Blood into the subdivision where there's additional turns and stopping that has to occur, it's not a shorter distance, it's not a faster distance. So will people try it? I believe it's likely they will try it maybe once or twice and say, well, that doesn't save me any time, that doesn't make any sense. They're going through a subdivision neighborhood that is not conducive to a speeding pass-through. So as far as a cut-through, we've looked at it, and we don't feel that it's going to substantially occur. And we've had this conversation, Steve and I, as far as, you know, is that legitimate to discount? And the answer is yes. It's not going to be a high-speed cut-through for people to try to save some time or whatever.
I know, Davis, that looking from the distance that you are at the illustration that Ken has before you, that, to travel from where you would enter the development to the roundabout, you would encounter three stop conditions?
Okay. Yeah, because from here, and again, you know, far away, it looks like it's a straight shot-up blood road, and the subdivision entrance is off of Blood Road.
Yeah. So it would be, it would be a long cut, not a shortcut.
Gotcha. Okay. That, I, that's fine. Thank you. And I think I had, oh, you were speaking about the easement deed, Mr. Clinton. Which easement deed are you referring to? I think there's a couple in play. There's one where the district received an easement from the town to encroach upon some of their property on Madeline Bennett Lane, but then there's also the conservation easement. So I'm just curious as to which one you're referring to.
It's the conservation, it's the conservation.
Easement deed? Okay.
They're one and the same. The conservation easement and then the, here it is right here in the last page.
The part that we went on to Bishop Road, or Bishop property, rather?
Yeah. Notwithstanding the restrictions on the easement area in Section Three and limitations, the grantee, you know, it basically says, it acknowledges, Old Blood Road is a Class Six road, and the grantee is presently considering a plan for realignment and upgrade of Old Blood Road to a Class Five road. As presently proposed, the realignment may result in the road encroaching on the easement area along the eastern side of the easement area. That's the actual language it uses. As far as the word encroachment, this does a little bit more than encroach. It puts the road right on top of the easement itself, and that's where we get into the legality issue, if we do have to change this or not. Our present legal counsel has stated that there is a change needed due to the language here. And it goes back to what's in Section Three, where it says somewhere in here that there'll be no aircraft landing strip, helicopter pad, or like, no improvements such as radio, other towers, antennas, utility poles, cables, electric gas, SOAR, or other utility lines in the easement area. And there is definitely going to be a SOAR line underneath that road, and a buried underground, I'm assuming you buried the lines, that's just my assumption, that there would be underground buried lines, but that's also covered by utility poles. So that's where we have to get our person from Wadley to talk to the developer's representative, Mr. Michael, I believe, to come to an agreement on that, whether or not a modification to this easement document is necessary. And then, at that point in time, the board would have to decide, if there is one, whether they object or they don't object. You don't have to endorse it, you just have to object or not object, that's all.
And if I could just respond?
Oh, go ahead.
The utilities indeed will be underground, you know, all the standard power, phone, cable, et cetera, will be underground, as well as obviously sewer and or water. As far as the specific language in the easement document, if it's found through our counsel and the SAU counsel, that they need to talk about is the language in the deed that allows for this, specific enough to cover what is being proposed, or does some modification need to happen? I'm comfortable and confident that something can be worked out as far as addendum to this that can address that. We could not proceed fully to our design on this without getting the general layout and approach understood and agreed to. So we haven't necessarily fully designed the road heading south into the subdivision is, putting the cart before the horse, so to speak.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Schneider.
It's not a question as much as just a planting a seed. I've been a kid that's lived in this town. I've had my kids that have lived in this town. Right now, there's no reason for a kid to go down Madeline Bennett because it just dumps it, this middle school, there's nothing interesting there. You put a roundabout there and then an access road that goes that way. I'm concerned about off-hour racetrack conditions. And don't think for a minute that's not going to happen, because I was chasing after a kid down my street today for doing that, with houses around, with no houses on these access roads, I'm concerned. So when you look at the planning, I mean, it sounds silly, and people that live on the road probably would complain, but something as simple as speed bumps would slow things down periodically, just to keep the high-speed traffic, but the people could still have these. So that's just something to consider as we go through. There was observations made about the caterpillar effect, going through the high school in the morning to drop off a son and have the caterpillar effect come at you when it comes from behind. You quickly learn the routine once you get into the routine. I'm sure there's some best practices that the eighteen or so buses stacked up could do to prevent cars from getting caught in the middle, like the back bus pulls out and sort of blocks traffic, and then the other ones pull in front. So I mean, I'm not so worried about that. One of the concerns that I do have, having picked up kids, is, I love the idea of adding that, so you've got two lanes going in, one that turns in for the parent pickup, one that goes straight. I think that's great. But you see where that turn lane goes, and it goes into the roundabout, and then it goes back to that DMZ, demilitarized zone where the buses are at. Depending on the day and what parents picking up, it's very possible there could be parent pickups that start to segue into that hatch zone where the buses are staged. So it's not, it's just something to keep in mind when you go there, but I mean, depending on the day, there's sometimes there are a lot of cars queued up in there. But other than that, I mean, you know, I'm nitpicking, everybody's asked all the right questions, all the concerns and things like that. I think some of the traffic, the proof will be in the pudding once it's there, to see what it is. I'm just trying to anticipate ahead what might be concerned. But Madeline Bennett has always been a very enticing road, but it's never had much interest because it doesn't go anywhere. Now, it's going to go someplace, and whether they go live in the development or whether they just want to find a back way to Wilson Hill, there will be people that use it that don't live in that development or don't go to the school, so, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Gualum.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the conservation area. Has this been brought before the Conservation Committee, or has there been any feedback? I know my own personal property, you really have to be careful with even areas with firms and things like that. So I wonder if you could talk to me a little bit about what you've done in that regard, or what the process would be, or kind of where we are in the... or what the process would be or kind of where we are in the next.
Yep. I understand the question and yes, we have gone before the Conservation Commission to discuss this project and share with them the overall approach. We did show that we were looking to realign and upgrade Old Blood Road through this section. The overall property, as I said, was about 200 acres. It's an open space cluster subdivision. Approximately 80 acres will be developed and 120 will be protected open space, which will then be added to and adjacent to other town lands, not just the conservation easement. That's immediately adjacent on the school property, but there's other types of protection on other lands adjacent to the west and somewhat detached to the south a bit, too. So we have gone before them. We don't have anything, it was more of an informal meeting just to let them know what the general approach was, to refamiliarize them with the project. Once again, this is in some form or another, it's been going on for 10 years. And certainly the economy had a lot to do with slowing that down. So we've been involved, once again, for just about a year. And if we can get this intersection resolved as far as finalizing a direction, then when we move into the final design, we are obligated to go back before the Conservation Commission as well to discuss a couple of wetland impacts and further solidify, do they want to take actual possession of in, in an oversight fashion on some or all of the easement areas or open space easement areas? Or which ones do they feel they have an interest in? So that's an ongoing discussion we'll have with them.
Thank you.
Everyone all set? Vice Chair Barnes.
I kind of have a question amongst us and is there any expectation of us doing anything about this tonight or is it just that, is this a fact finding for us?
Yeah, I, I was going to wrap up and explain that for our purposes, I think what we were doing tonight was taking the information in. The plans were presented, a discussion of options reviewed and concerns and pros and cons presented. In terms of seeking an endorsement, I think that's something we need to process and then take up at a subsequent meeting. So I would have this on the agenda probably for our October 6th meeting to actually take up a, a board's position on it. I think the evening that you're taking information in is too soon to, to actually react to it and make a substantial decision. There was an awful lot to be considered here.
Yes, Vice Chair Barnes.
That being said, it doesn't give us a lot of time if we do consider October 6th our next time to address this issue. I think beyond, you know, being just, you know, a, a property owner, a, you know, an easement grantee, we, we have, you know, we're also a neighbor. And the impact of our decisions to the, to the community in that area of town, I think, should be considered as well. I don't know if there's an opportunity for us as a board to solicit input from, from the surrounding of Butters to, to that area of Madeline Bennett, Babusak Lake, that would possibly see impact from, from this decision. Because from what I'm gathering, it's going to be about 52 homes?
It's actually, it's actually 71.
71 homes, that's more.
Yep. As a matter of fact, through the process, both Planning Board and Zoning Board have, we've been required to notify, certify, mail all of the Butters. That's happened at least twice, if not more, on this particular project in the past year. And we've had a sit walk with interested Butters, et cetera, where we've talked about the connection with Madeline Bennett. And so quite frankly, we've, we've already had this fairly exhaustive effort with the Butters, town staff, departments, et cetera, to, I guess, understand any of the issues and come to a common understanding as far as how to resolve them. And that's where we got to tonight, quite frankly. This, I was hopeful and expecting that you'd have enough information at this point to, through the district hiring Steve Keach as an independent voice to review our work. And so this is, as I see it, the school district's consultant, who I've worked with for the past two months or so, maybe perhaps just shy of that on this, to make sure that all of the work we've done has been vetted and that you would have a, a recommendation through perhaps Steve and certainly Matt's been involved in this process for many months.
No, and I don't want to be presumptuous here, but, you know, we actually have gotten feedback from the Butters about this very project. So we don't know how their concerns are even being addressed by this plan. So I think it's, as I said, being a neighbor to these areas, we need to be a good citizen to those areas. And I think what you said, we don't need to bring in our lawyers, I know yours is here tonight, but it's important for us as we deal with something like an easement to consult our attorneys and make sure that we are doing the right thing with the agreements that we're establishing and holding them up in the spirit into which they were intended to be written and that we're not taking, you know, an interpretation of it to, to meet a, a further goal. I think it is, you know, beholden to us to, to call our attorneys and make sure we're doing the right legal process to make sure we're representing the district properly. So I, I wouldn't, I, you know, if, if you said we had to make a suggestion, I would, I would say we shouldn't do that tonight. It's irresponsible of us to do that as a governing body.
Mr. Powell, you had your hand up.
Yes, I have to echo Mrs. Barnes's sentiments. If you asked me for my decision tonight, my answer would be no. And the reason for that is the, the ambiguity, I'm sorry, lack of ambiguity in how the easement is written. It specifically says no utilities. I'm sorry, it's sewer lines of utility. And until we get some clarification on that, I'm not going to be able to, to support or, I, I just don't have enough information to make a decision. If that had been provided before tonight, maybe, but we're still asking for the information.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with what my colleagues here said and, and it reinforces the, the position that I've taken. To your point, Mr. Clinton, Mr. Keach's involvement and review of the plans and the collaboration that you took on them, I think, make them much more palatable to, to the board, understandable. We know that it works and, and addresses our concerns. From, from that perspective, his word, you know, carries a lot of weight. But that said, there's an awful lot to consider here. And so along those lines, it's reasonable for us to take the couple of weeks review process and, and take this information in. I do appreciate the work that you did together, the presentation that you made tonight. If there are any other supporting diagrams, the one that we got is the one that's up on the board. If there's additional ones that help to clarify, you know, the traffic patterns, the, you know, a drill down on the, the high level one that you provided there to, to allay any concerns about cut-throughs, et cetera, feel free to provide those to the board. And we'll put this on our agenda for October 6th.
Okay, thank you for that. The only outstanding item that I gathered that is yet to be resolved is the verification that the language in the easement deed allows for such a relocation. I believe we had all the other questions answered to the board's satisfaction. Is that not true?
I think so. I think there's, you know, some, some questions about the neighbors that, but that's not for you to follow up on, that's, that's ours.
Okay, so from our standpoint, we will certainly follow up with the easement language to reach out to the SAU counsel to have a dialogue about, is the language ambiguous or does it allow for what we're seeking to do? And then hopefully at that point, the attorneys can reach a fairly low-level understanding and report back to the board.
That would be great.
Okay. And I'm assuming that my presence would be required on the 6th of October at that point, just in case there's any follow-up questions?
It would help, certainly, in case there's any follow-up. I, I don't know that it would necessarily be required, but certainly if there were follow-up, it would be helpful to have you here.
Okay.
If, if you're available.
I'll make myself available.
Wonderful. Again, I, I do appreciate the presentation and the collaboration and we'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Keach. That now takes us to item number seven, response from educators about smarter balanced field testing. And I am going to invite a large number of people to the table. Mr. Ron Delude, Ms. Helen Fitzgerald, Ms. Joanne Green, Ms. Carol Lewis, Mr. Mark Maryfield, Ms. Nicole Rowe, Ms. Michelle Romaine, Ms. Cheryl Smith, and Ms. Kathleen Hoppa. That's Hoppa, not Hopper.
So while the team gathers.
Michelle and Joanne, go ahead and sit in the center.
Sure. Well, the team gathers, I just would, I'd just offer a few words of introduction and then, and then turn it over to Mrs. McGill. I just want to provide just a, a, a broad outline of, of the smarter balanced field testing experience that we've had. The original field testing began in spring 2013 and, excuse me, the initiative continued again into the spring of 2014. And there were three purposes chiefly for the smarter balanced field test. One was quality assurance and that was that the field test was designed to field test and pilot over 19,000 test items. And so one of the chief purposes was to assess those for utility, for worthwhileness and whether or not they'd be included in the final test. Also to set a benchmark for achievement standards, there needed to be a way to assess what those initial benchmarks would be and there was that purpose. And also to help participating districts to understand the technology requirements of the smarter balanced test. So those three purposes really were the chief, the chief benefits from engaging in this. I also would point out that this was an invitation and so five of our six districts over the two field test years were invited. Thornton's Ferry was the only school in our district that was not extended the invitation. So you won't see a representative from Thornton's Ferry tonight and that's just the way that it, that the invitations happened. Nothing to be gleaned from it. We were fortunate to have five of our six schools able to participate. So having said that, I would invite Mrs. McGill to introduce the team and, and then opening remarks about the J MUSE field experience.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the board for inviting us to speak about the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium field testing in the springs of 2013 and 2014. We're happy to be here to share our experiences with you this evening. I'd like to introduce the team. From Merrimack High School, we have Mark Maryfield, the Technology Integration Coordinator. We have Ron Delude, the Math Department Head. From Merrimack Middle School, we have Cheryl Smith, the Math Coordinator. From James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, we have Helen Fitzgerald, our Technology Integration Coordinator, and Nicole Rowe, our Language Arts Coordinator. From Mastercola Elementary School, we have Michelle Romaine, who at the time was the Language Arts Coordinator, but now serves as the Assistant Principal. And we have Joanne Green, the Special Education Coordinator. From Reed's Ferry School, we have Kathleen Hoppa, the School Counselor, and we have Carol Lewis, the Education Technology Integrator. We'd like to start this evening with a presentation from the pilot of 2013. James Mastercola Upper Elementary School was the only school that was invited at that, in this particular year to participate in this first pilot. So I'd like for Helen and Nikki to share a little bit about our experiences.
As we began, we were totally a team. We started off with technology, our administrators and teachers and our students. Nancy Rose, she facilitated our readiness survey as a district to see how our infrastructure was. And she also gave us a secured icon on all the desktops so that students could access smarter balanced test. We started off in 2013 with sixth grade math and we had at that point about 300-plus students, regular and special ed students were part of the test. When we, when we received the manuals and they were extremely thick and, and definitely large, we downloaded them, we worked as a, as a whole team. We looked at manuals, we watched numerous online videos many, many times. We had a phone help desk available and we also had a, a website where we could go on and look at problems that Smarter Balanced made available to us. Our, our building leadership team, we read, reread, discussed information, shared information, previewed videos, shared them with the teachers, we viewed them at faculty meetings, we, we viewed them during professional dialogues and we re-watched them to take notes as to all the little tidbits that they were giving us. For teachers, our teachers were trained and they instructed our students using smarter balanced online samples in their classrooms. Our administrators supported the teachers by providing detailed directions to access these smarter balanced web links in order to become familiar with the link, the various sample problems that Smarter Balanced has released to us. And, and videos were all viewed during faculty meetings. For our, for our testing situation, our students were provided with individual access codes with classroom teachers present. Our special ed teachers also participated in small group testing areas. What was amazing was that our students' desktop was different, no matter what student you sat, they sat next to. And the students were observing that. So if they looked at their desktop, what problem they were working on was not the same it was next door to them. But our students were very comfortable using technology. They were very familiar with the computers at the upper elementary school and they truly persevered in solving the problems that were given to them.
I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the lessons that we learned from conducting this pilot in 2013. Helen has mentioned it a couple of times, but it truly was a team effort. One of the things that we learned was that we need to be active in this process. And so having several test administrators at each testing cycle as the students went through was extraordinarily helpful. What we did is we had little cups on each of the computers, one was red and one was blue. And we would have the students put up a, a red cup if they needed help. And one test administrator was on the floor and would go right to that student. The other test administrator sat at a computer terminal and monitored the test from that terminal. We also had a teacher who was actively monitoring and it, and it was a really nice partnership of the three adults in the room to actively monitor and to provide the students with whatever they needed at the, at the moment that they needed it. Given the rigor of the questions, we were very interested to observe that students had to answer every question before they moved on or each question before they moved on to another question. One thing that we learned was that students were able to flag questions so that they could then go back. So they could make their best guess, move on to another question, and then at the end of the session, they could go back, check their work or spend a longer amount of time on a question that they were not as confident about. One of the, the, one of the things that we did was we asked students for feedback concerning their use of the computers. And as Helen mentioned, the kids revealed that they were pretty comfortable using the technology. Helen said that we observed the students persevering and that was definitely true. And I'd like to add to that, they were, they took it very seriously and they were extremely focused. They, you could tell that they wanted to do their best job and that they were engaged in the process. One final thing that I'd like to talk to you about was a couple of things that we learned about the special ed process. We had put all of our accommodations in for our regular ed students and our special ed students. And we found during the 2013 pilot that we weren't able to use these accommodations. So we are looking, looking forward to a time that the students can use those accommodations because there were several different things that the students will be able to do. Finally, all of our concerns, our questions and our feedback was given to the Smarter Balanced Consortium and so they were able to benefit from the experiences that we had at J MUSE.
Thank you, Nikki and Helen. Next, we would like to share the 2014 experiences of the field test. We'd like to start with Merrimack High School, then we'll move on to the middle school, Mastercola Elementary, and then Reed's Ferry. So Mark and Ron.
Okay. So from my perspective as a technical guy at the, at the high school, I was mostly interested in how are we going to make this happen? How are we going to roll it out? How is it going to work in our high school environment? So I was, I was informed that I needed to install a secure web. So, I was, I was informed that I needed to install a secure web browser on all of the computers that would be used, so I downloaded that, that software and installed it. I was a little concerned about how well it was going to work, and would it work in a, in a Windows environment with students who log in with their own accounts versus in an elementary environment where they weren't doing that, and they were working on Macintoshes. And I was pleasantly, well, I wasn't not surprised, but I was pleased that it did work just fine. There wasn't any problem installing the software, and it worked, it worked well on all the computers in the library, which is where we gave the testing. There were about fifty computers there. And there were some older machines, Pentium four variety, and the, the test worked, worked fine on those as well. I was interested in observing the piece of the software that the proctor would use, and so, that software allows the proctor to start, stop, or pause the student test and observe the progress that the students are making as the test proceeds. You can watch as a student logs in, the student, that, that, that shows up on the screen, you, so you can tell where they, where they are, which questions they're working on, to have some idea about how long it's going to take to complete the, the test. Students, as was mentioned before, they, it was required that they, they log in with a, with a password, and we've, we found it seemed to be a good idea to distribute those passwords on little slips of paper so that the students got them as they came in and then had that in front of them to start the test. So, there really was no, no particular difficulty on the technical side. Some things just that I want to keep in mind for the future will be the availability of computers and scheduling them with a larger group than what we did in the pilot. Headphones to be available for audio portion of the test, because we didn't, we didn't do an audio portion in our pilot. Training for the proctors so that they would be comfortable with the software beforehand, because this isn't a pencil, a pen, you know, pencil and paper test that most people would be very comfortable administering. This is a little bit different. And, and of course, allowing enough time to, to install the browser, because it'll be a, a different version by then, to install that browser everywhere that it's needed.
Ron, can you see what you want to add?
All right. When we did the test at the high school, it was for math. We did, we had volunteers. We actually had math teachers ask their classes, freshmen and juniors, if any would be interested in taking the test, and we actually found that a lot of, especially freshmen, were kind of excited about the prospect, and, you know, we'll get to see what this test is like. And so, we were able to get twenty-five volunteers from each class, and so, you know, we went down to the library and worked on it all together. The volunteers actually came from all levels. We had standard college prep and honors kids, pretty well represented in each category. In order to get the most out of the test, I felt it was important that the math teachers could get some exposure to see the kids' reactions and maybe see how the questions were. So, we actually had, it was a two-day test, and we had math teachers be the proctors. So every math teacher was able to proctor for one of the day, or one of the two days. We probably had more proctors than we needed, but everybody was able to actually see it, and I felt, I felt like we, we as a school got more out of it because of that. In terms of the actual taking of the tests, like, like has been said, the students had no trouble. I mean, kids can use computers, it, it'll be all right. You know, one, one student actually commented, especially on the first day, that it was, it's very similar to kneecap, it's just on a computer, you know, so. Yeah, other than that.
Thank you. At the middle school, we was also selected for the eighth grade, and it was just math. We randomly selected twenty-two students. The reason for that is it was one computer lab, we didn't want to tie up all the computers in the school. Leslie Wa, Leslie Wajola is the, was the eighth grade guidance counselor at the time last year, and myself were the testers. Again, because of the timing of it, it was the first week in June, we didn't want to impact the teachers or the students at that point. We selected to do it over two days. One was the non-performance task that took roughly two hours for the students to do in two sessions. The other was the classroom activity that we actually broke up into two parts. We had them in the classroom, we explained the instructions to them, we had discussions about what they were going to be doing, and then we brought them into the computer lab, and they actually did the performance task in about thirty minutes at that point. Excuse me. We sent a letter home to all the parents. I had it about two weeks ahead of time to let them know what the pilot was all about, if they had any questions to contact us. And as it would occur, on the first day that I was actually administering the test, a parent called in and left a message for me that she had a son who would get extremely anxious on taking major tests, so she didn't want him to participate. But unfortunately, we didn't get that till later. So I did get the message, I called her back, explained what had transpired, she didn't have a problem with them, with that, and we did exempt him for, for the second day itself. Excuse me. We also had a special education teacher who was willing and able to make any accommodations that were necessary for the students, if they needed a small group setting, or if they needed the test read to them. However, the students that were selected didn't need that, some of them did need extended time, which Leslie and I were able to handle at that time. The roles were primarily, Leslie was to work with Nancy Hobbs, our computer teacher, to make sure the software was working, and she would be the instructor during the time. My role was to select the students, notify the teachers, notify the parents, make sure that if any students had questions, which many of them did during the test, that I would go around and assist them. Leslie and I met for the, for, from the end of April through the month of May on a weekly basis, going over the field, field test information we were getting from the state, looked at the manual, as it was always referred to previously, that it was a very large manual, to make sure that we crossed everything that needed to be done, but as well to make it go as smoothly as we possibly could. We didn't have any difficulty with the technology piece at all. We didn't need to call the help desk, we thought we were going to at one point, but we didn't need to. The students worked diligently. They didn't have any difficulty working different windows at any time, the calculator section, they had no problems with it. I guess it's the experience they've had, working text messaging all the time. The only lesson that we really learned was, on the very first day, as Mark Merrifield mentioned, we were trying to verify the students' information correctly, and as we did that, as Leslie was trying to verify, students were getting bumped out. So what we decided to do, we learned by process, and this is where we thought we were going to have to call the help desk, if we did it as a group ahead of time, everybody, everything went smoothly, which is what we did the second day. The building itself was ready because the math teachers throughout the year had looked at the sample questions, we had adjusted our curriculum, the topics. I have two special ed teachers who work with me in the math department, and they had gone already and looked at the accommodations that they might need to implement, which we didn't at this point. The only concern we have, as well as everybody else so far, is just as we do it in a larger population this year, how it will affect the building itself. But other than that, we had a, actually, a very nice time, and the students are very thankful. They got ice cream in the end, so it worked out well.
Just a simple push, it should light up glowing green.
Yeah, okay.
Much better.
At Mastercola Elementary School, we were selected to do third grade math and fourth grade ELA, English Language Arts. And as a special ed coordinator, my concern was having the special education students well-prepared and set up with the accommodations that they needed. We decided to do all students in the third and fourth grade classes, so we did about a hundred in each grade. Of those students, there were probably about fifteen with IEPs. So, one of the first things we did was we downloaded a manual on the accommodations, and we took a lot of time to really go through the manual and see how it was different than, than the kneecap accommodations. There were three levels of supports in this Smarter Balance test, and the first level is called universal tools, and it's a type of accommodation that any student can have. You don't need to be on an IEP or a 504. It's something that's built into the system, for example, the calculator, as Cheryl was talking about. Any student for certain parts of the test can access a calculator. The second is called designated supports, and it's for students that need a higher level of support or accommodations, and it needs to be recommended by a teacher or a team. So that might include something like having a portion of the test read to them, possibly in the math section, having the questions read to them because their reading might not be what it should be. And then, the third level is for just IEP and 504 students, and that's called the Accommodation Section, and that's something a little bit more supportive, and it might be something such as having a scribe. They may be unable to type the answers in, so they may have an adult that there's, given the answers to, and the adult describing for them. What Michelle and I did is we went through the students' IEPs and looked at the accommodations that they were receiving on kneecap, and we tried to line them up with the Smarter Balance test. And we found that most of the students, or a good amount of them, didn't need anything extra because they were able to access the universal tools. And so, we didn't feel that as many accommodations were needed overall. Some needed designated supports, and again, that would be somebody possibly who needed the questions read to them. And then, others, we didn't really do the scribe or any of that, we wanted to just try them and see how they did. And I have to say that it worked out very, very well. The students on IEPs and 504s were very comfortable with the technology, as you've heard from the other schools. We were more nervous about them doing the testing online than they were. We felt that, I think that it was a very inclusive process because out of all of the students we had, we only had one student who did not participate in the computer lab, and what we did is we downloaded the, the browser onto our laptops, and so if anybody needed that, we would take them into the resource room, and they could do the test on our laptop. And we did that with one child, and that's all. So, in the past with kneecaps, we would have groups of students that may go to a quiet setting, and maybe would need to have questions read to them, so they would have to be separated, but this way, it was very inclusive. So, as a special ed person, I really enjoyed this more than having to separate the others as we did in the past. One of the other things that I think worked well is that we had, all students wear headphones. So for those that needed that level, that second level where they would have questions read to them, nobody knew that they were getting that accommodation. We had set it up into, we had gone into each student's login and put the accommodations in, so they were able to access some of those supports without anybody even realizing that they were having it read to them because they all had headphones on. We did have a lot of adults in the room. We had the computer teacher, we had administrators, we had our, our Language Arts Coordinator, myself, special ed teacher, classroom teacher, guidance counselor was in and out depending on her schedule. So we had a lot of support, and it was good for the students because we were there to answer their questions if they had any. It was good for the adults because it gave us a better understanding of how to get set up for next year. So, lessons learned, I think, is to really look carefully at those accommodations ahead of time and match them up to what the students need. Have a backup plan so that you have possibly laptops in other areas that are ready to go if a student is not comfortable in the, in the larger setting. Maybe check the accommodations to make sure they're working. We weren't sure if they were actually going to work or not, it was something that happened at the last minute, but we, we checked everything ahead of time, we knew everything was good to go, and I think the students really enjoyed, and I think they're better prepared for next year. And again, I think the, the adults were more, more nervous than they were. They did a great job.
I would reiterate a lot of what was said before about having a team approach. So we set up a team very early on with administration, the coordinators, both the Language Arts Coordinator and the Special Ed Coordinator, as well as our Computer Technology Educator and our School Counselor. And we started very similarly, we downloaded the manuals and the supports. We also downloaded a responsibility timeline, a field guide timeline, and went through and assigned each member of the team specific responsibilities. We also then had the staff watch the tools video as well as the Smarter Balance introductory video, and we also, we held that staff meeting in the computer lab, and after we watched the videos, we also had the staff take the Smarter Balance practice test so they could see exactly what was waiting for the children. We also then had the students watch the video for the tools and the introduction to the Smarter Balance test in the computer lab with the CTE, and then another time they, we set up a schedule so they could go in and practice the practice test in the computer lab as well. We blocked off, over a two-week period, we blocked off our blocks where the kids rotated in. One week was third grade and one week was fourth grade, so we did have to close the computer lab to the rest of the students when we were taking the assessment. We also set up the schedule for the performance task part, the classroom activity that was done, so one group was doing that in the, in the classroom, while other groups were testing. We downloaded all of the materials for the teachers ahead of time, so they had that to look at. We also, the New Hampshire Department of Education put out frequently asked questions throughout the entire process, so we were able to look at those each day and actually troubleshoot a few things that needed to be done before we actually gave the assessment. Some of the lessons learned, I think, was that working as the, as the leadership team and following that administration checklist was helpful. The other thing that was very helpful was Helen Fitzgerald had suggested the name tags with the kids being able to log right on. So our third and fourth graders had little name tags with their student number, and they logged themselves on quickly, they were able to put in their test session and all of that very quickly and easily, and as Joanne stated and other people stated today, that I think that they were, enjoyed the test much more being on the computer. It kept their interest, the kids worked extremely hard, and it went very smoothly at MES.
He can't hear you.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. At Reed's Ferry, we tested about fifty fourth grade students in math only. We found that the Smarter Balance materials, manuals, and the support guides were actually kind of cumbersome and difficult to use, not terribly easy user-friendly, but of course, we benefited from all the knowledge and experience gained from our colleagues at other schools, so we had that to our advantage as well. Combined with that knowledge, we used a lot of trial and error and many, many, many practice runs and problem solving, so we didn't even really need the, the, the use of the help desk at Smarter Balance. Our planning and implementation was much like you've heard already before and involved practice, practice, and more practice.
As far as the observations of the test itself and the student interaction with the test, with anything involving technology, you have to be prepared for glitches. So we had extra computers set up in the room ready to go so that if there were any problems that came up, we were able to quickly move a student from one computer onto another and then fix that computer that was giving us problems. It didn't happen much, but it did a couple of times have a little few things that happened. The other thing we wanted to try out were makeups. We had some students who were absent, so we actually were able to, because of the test design, bring students in that were taking different sessions, that had missed different sessions, and were able to have them all in one room at one time. And how, just the logistics of it, we used, we had to have different administrative, for the proctors, test administrative computers, so we used iPads in addition to one computer, just so that we were able to work that out. And then, as everybody else said, the test was very user-friendly, students came in, they were excited to not be using, you know, filling in the dots. They were excited to use the computers to answer the questions. They had no problem, they're 21st century learners. I think the teachers who took the test ahead of time had more difficulty than the students did. So, yeah, I, I, I think it went very well.
Thank you for inviting us to share our experiences with the 2013, 2014 field tests. If there are any questions, we can answer them for you.
I am certain there will be. Let's see, Vice Chair Barnes, why don't you go first?
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have three questions so far. You talked about sessions. What was the time per session and the follow-on to that is, you know, at the computers? And what percentage of representation would that be for a normal testing session when Smarter Balance is actually implemented?
We found in 2013, because of how the test ran right from the general questions into the performance task, on the average, our time was, I think, somewhere between about an hour and 45 minutes to about a little bit over two hours.
And that'd be a normal session if it was actually in practice, correct?
I think in practice, we'd probably look again at it and make sure we separate out that performance task with it being so new to us. And the one test running into the others, we probably would pause, do a break, go back and do a section at a later time or in the afternoon.
And I know that you talked a lot about the practice of it, but have, was there a lot of analysis about the content of it?
We did after 2013 analysis of the content, just looking at, you know, how the screen was presented to children, what kinds of things can we do to help children become comfortable and familiar with the formatting of it? So we did analyze that. We talked to the students quite a bit too about, were they comfortable with the computer? And they were, like everyone said, very, very comfortable.
But the types of questions being asked as well? Because I'm sure that there's a different flavor on how questions may have been asked versus Kneecap. Was there an analysis of what the questions being laid out on Smarter Balance pilot were versus Kneecap? Because that's what they're used to, obviously.
I think we talked quite a bit about that. We think that the rigor of the question was much higher. We feel that questions were multi-stepped. There was a lot of writing in reference to questions. Students would have to, you know, go through their computations, but then they would have to write about how they came up with an answer, just the formatting of it. And we talked about how students would have to look through, say, one screen on the side, all the information that was provided. And it was a split screen. And then the rest of the screen would ask the question. And students would have to, say, design a garden or design a room. And they'd have to use all the information that was provided on the left-hand side. So that's very different than Kneecap. Also, the performance tasks. We didn't have a performance task that required training ahead of time. But there are performance tasks that students participate the day before in an activity. Then they come in the next day and their performance task is to then answer questions about that experience from the day before. I don't know if any of the other schools had that type of a performance task, but we knew that that was available. So that's very different from the Kneecap.
And then you talked about the questions being more rigorous. Did it, was there a gap between the content of the questions and the curriculum in the classroom?
I'm not sure we were able to, just because we didn't have the test to then break down afterwards. We're going from memory from what we were watching from the children. And I think that, you know, the work that we're doing with children on perseverance and, you know, rigor is really leading to and helping our students be able to work with a test like this, if that's what you're asking. I think we did that kind of analysis to say that, yeah, it does, what we're doing in school with children every day is very similar to what's being asked.
Excellent. That's exactly what I was asking. Thank you very much.
Set. Any other questions? Mr. Powell.
Just one quick follow-up question. Mrs. Fitzgerald, you mentioned that there was different desktop for different students. Would that, I'm assuming that that just means it was like test A, test B type of thing? Or was the layout completely different?
The layout and the questions were totally different. So if you had a series of eight computers down and you looked at those eight students' desktops, you did not see the same problem.
Okay.
So there wasn't ever a problem where, and the students were amazed because you're sitting here and they're looking there. And they're seeing a different problem totally to their left and to their right as to what they had in their screen. And as much as we would say, you know, eyes on your own desktop, once they noticed that, that it was never an issue.
That's interesting because that's not something I would even consider.
Even the performance tasks, there were like 12 different performance tasks. But one of the things about Kneecap is the Kneecap releases questions. Okay, so after the Kneecap test is finished at the end of the year, they always release questions. When we piloted Smarter Balanced, no questions are released. So that you're basically walking, you know, in the room and you're looking at this question here and you're looking at that question there, but you never receive a copy of it. So even the performance task, we knew one was on a garden and one was on a park and how many trees here and how many cars you could park in this parking lot and how can you build, you know, so many houses here? Or, but other than us observing it, then there are problems we, you know, you read them and you say, oh, that's a really good problem, but you can't write anything. You're just there observing as the student is moving parts to answer the problem. There are questions online that you can go to, but those are the same questions that have been there since 2013.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you, all of you, taking the time to come and share the experience. I tell you, I'm pleased to hear that it's, that it was well-received by the students. And I think it's kind of comical that the adults had a little more angst going through it than the students did. But I'm glad to hear that that piece of it's out of the way. I guess a question that's yet to be answered, or I'm sure it's been asked but yet to be answered, is infrastructure-wise, are we going to be able to put this in place with the current technology and computers and such that we have? But we'll save that for a different day. Thank you very much.
Do you want to address that, Dr. Paul?
Well, I can, you know, begin to address that. It was referenced in the presentation tonight that there was a technology readiness survey that was sent to all the school districts in the state. And the express purpose of that was to assess, you know, where a district is relative to tech readiness for the test and then also to help the state determine, and Smarter Balanced, the degree to which they could, you know, rely on the online portion. If most of the districts in any given state say, you know, we have no tech readiness, then clearly that would have indicated a different result. So based on that and based on the fact that there is a 12-week testing window, which means that there will be a period of time for students to be able to take this test over, you know, that coupled with what we already have and what we know we'll need, which is minimal, I think we feel confident that we are in good shape. Doesn't mean we're not working from now through the spring. But that tech readiness survey helped us to understand what the requirements would be and we're not far off.
Well, that's good to hear. Can I ask just one quick follow-up?
Yeah.
In the past with Kneecap, I know at the high school, there seemed to be days where the entire junior class, for example, was off doing some, you know, the testing and the rest of the schedule had to be accommodated, the rest of the building's schedule had to be accommodated towards that. With this 12-week window, has there been any thought, are we going to be able to avoid that same disruption?
So I'm reluctant to speculate right now because...
I'm gonna hold you to it.
Because that's really, the leadership team, you know, in each building is going to play a huge role in determining how that plays out. I know that all the principals are trying very hard to minimize impact, which we always do. Certainly, there's a little more leeway given that window. But how the principals and their teams choose to operationalize it isn't something I think that any of us are ready to speak to right now. That doesn't mean that planning isn't underway and won't continue to evolve and refine. So I would just answer you by saying it's taken into consideration. And I think we'll have a very good plan that minimizes impact to the degree that it's possible by the time it actually operationalizes in the spring.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder, I've got to be fair.
We've decided down this end that you should start this in and work that way the next time.
I think, you know, historically, I usually do.
I know, I know.
Just mixed it up tonight.
Failed on this one here. So you started to ask the question about the capacity. And it sounds like, given the 12-week window and stuff, you're going to be sort of working through that. I know that Nancy's done a really good job with the different buildings to try to make sure there's adequate infrastructure. Obviously, the first year though, there's going to be some, you know, some learning that goes on in terms of how that's going to pace out. One of the interesting questions though, and you sort of came, started talking about this a little. We know that the methodology behind Common Core and Smarter Balance is more on application and understanding rather than the right or wrong answer like Kneecap tends to be. And those of us that have had students take Kneecaps for years, you guys have taught it for years. We know that Smarter Balanced is more on the application and the really understanding the material. Based on watching the students take the samples, do you believe that they adapted well to the change in the way the questions were asked to be able to reach the end? Do you think it was harder for them? Do you think it was more, I'm struggling for the word, more natural, more logic to the way that they would naturally think? I'm just trying to understand. There's been a lot of pressure and a lot of question about whether the learning and the testing is appropriate or not. And watching them, you know, I'm just curious if there was any observations or takeaways.
I think the ease of the work on the part of the students. We were wondering about what that anxiety level might be with students. But they went right through it without a bit of a hitch. We've been doing a lot more work in application of the learning that we do with children and having them, you know, not only you just give a right or a wrong answer, but let's talk about it, let's discuss it, discuss it with a partner, let's write about, you know, the work that you've done. We've put a lot of time and energy into that and I think it's paying off. And I'm sure there may have been some students, but our students afterwards, when we asked them about their thoughts, you know, they said it was, you know, some of the questions were a little bit harder, but they liked working on the computer better than they liked working with paper and pencil. And they're just so comfortable with that. And anyone else who, you know, had experiences from students or comments, please, please share. But I think that it's a change for students. But we're doing that work with students every day. So I think it's not as much of a gap as maybe it originally would have been or has been. I think we're closing that gap.
From what I saw, the section of the test that was not the performance task was pretty similar. The kids had no troubles. I mean, you know, someone said it was hard, someone said it was easy, whatever they're going to say. But they didn't seem to be struggling with, oh, how do I answer this? What are they looking for? There was no culture shock in that way. Again, you know, we didn't get results from this pilot. It just wasn't part of the deal. So kid comes back and tells you they did wonderful. I mean, oh, great. So there's no way to really tell from that. What I did notice is that the performance task, that was a lot more, we had some kids who were finished. And it was, you knew they probably didn't write as much as they were looking for. We had some kids who spent a real long time on it. You know, it really came down to each individual kid. So I think it's very hard from this pilot to predict how well they're going to adapt to it. But, I mean, nobody left in tears. So, you know, I mean, it could have gone, you know, it seemed all right. The kids seemed, like they've said before, the fact that it was on a computer was great for them. You know, they liked that.
So actually, one directed at you. We've heard, when you look at reviews and you hear about Smarter Balance, you hear that, especially in math, some of the ways, I mean, the calculator is one thing, but there's some other ways around graphing and being able to represent things that are more cumbersome in the computer. Did you find that to be true? Did you find that things that kids would do on paper was harder for them to do on the computer?
Not with the test problems that I saw. The, I can't, oh, performance, I can't think of that term. The performance tests that we saw, there wasn't really a lot of graphing or visual representations on. There was one about getting your learner's permit, which is a little weird for kids from New Hampshire. So they sort of had a little bit of an adjustment to that kind of thing. And then there was one about season tickets to baseball, which they understood a little better. There were some graphs, but there wasn't anything too abstract. I didn't notice any of that kind of an issue. But again, you know, you're looking over the shoulder of some kids taking a test and there's no feedback really.
Right.
So it's tough to tell.
Okay. This is good. I really appreciate. Would you like to speak?
Sorry. If I could just elaborate?
Yeah.
So one thing that, if it hasn't been mentioned, it's worth mentioning is that, as everybody pointed out, there are two parts to the test. One is the non-performance task and the other is the performance task. And the non-performance task one, which is more, as Ron said, which is more reflective of, or reminiscent of Kneecap, that's adaptive. And what that, and that's a major difference between this test and Kneecap. So what that functionally means, and it gets to why Mrs. Fitzgerald talked about maybe no two screens were exactly the same. If a student answers questions and continues to get those questions right, then the questions get increasingly difficult. And if a question becomes a little harder than it, the difficulty ratchets down a little bit for a period of time until the student is comfortable at that level and then ratchets up again. So that's another major difference. The other thing that I would just say to your question, Andy, earlier, is that we've been, we've been teaching our students for some time now of higher-ordered thinking skills. So for instance, whereas in the past, as a former English teacher, I might say, you know, something like, what happened, you know, what's the theme of chapter three? And a student would say whatever he or she wanted to say. Increasingly now, however, we are teaching students to defend their conclusion with support and data that can be cited. Like in chapter three, line 15, the character says X. And it is for that reason that I conclude Y. That's how we've really been pivoting our instruction more and more. And that is what's more present in Smarter Balance than was in Kneecap. So in that sense, we haven't manipulated our teaching for that purpose because we've been doing that all along because it's the better way to approach teaching. That's what we mean by teach for understanding. It's one thing to answer a question and another thing to be required to provide some reason for getting to that. Otherwise, it could be a lucky guess. So that we've been doing for some time. And that's reflected in the kind of testing setting that we have now.
Right. No, and I know, because we've gone through that in discussing the curriculum that we went and talked about last year. So I knew the changes there. I'm just trying to find whether that adaption and evolution, if you will, of the curriculum, the testing, the kids adapted well to it. It sounds like overall, based on what you've seen that's good, you know, that they have. And that's sort of what I was looking for, to make sure that the testing adapted along with the curriculum evolution that you've done. So I think, I really appreciate everybody being open and sharing that kind of information because it's been helpful to me anyway. Thanks.
Ms. Gualyumi.
Yeah, I had also had the question regarding the student feedback. And you answered that thank you as well as the results. So I understand the results aren't part of this, which would have been really helpful, I think, to know, are we really, you know, are we really matching up? The other question I had is around parents' feedback post-survey, I mean, post-test. Has anyone received any parents, parental feedback after students had taken the exam? By show of your hands, any? No? All right, thank you. And then the other question I had, maybe for the assistant superintendent, regarding the testing period of having 12 weeks and being able to kind of stagger and use it, is that district-wide or is there a risk of, let's say, a student saying, hey, well, when I took the test, they asked me to do this kind of a problem? Does it switch it out or can you tell me a little bit about?
Primarily on the non-performance task component because it's adaptive. That problem that you described almost doesn't exist for that reason.
Thank you.
All set? Any other questions? I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I'll just ask the open-ended question in terms of, you know, the feedback that you did give to the consortia. You know, what are the biggest concerns that you have as a group? And as it relates to those, what can the board do to be supportive in terms of seeing those addressed? I think I know the answer because I heard it from a few of you, but I also want to make sure I understand what the biggest issues might be that are out there. Right? Pilots are done for a reason, right? It's great that our kids were able to adapt. It's wonderful that we didn't have many glitches. It's wonderful, too, that we learned from the experience and will be more prepared. That's wonderful. But pilots are supposed to also show, I don't know, cracks in the seams and things that perhaps we need to get feedback on. So I'm curious, what do we need to know?
Well, I'll just repeat what I had mentioned, I think, earlier. Scheduling. Scheduling. The kneecap test was done in the cafeteria. Wasn't very hard to accommodate 300-plus students in this case. However, whatever way we accommodate the students with the computers, those computers are being used every day for another purpose. If, at the high school, I'm pretty sure that we're going to have to use library computers, for example. So I can't imagine a schedule where we would be able to keep the library completely open during the testing. I'm sure that it will be used some of the time. So yeah, that's a concern.
Capacity, yeah. Is there anything else? That was the answer I had heard.
You know, being in the initial pilot in 2013, I think there were some things in just, you know, getting through all the manuals and getting through all the videos and understanding. Once you go through it, you have a pretty good understanding then what the whole picture looks like, but trying to get all those pieces together to see what it was going to look like. But then I think once we got into the test and we got through a couple of those initials, like whenever a screen would go blank and we thought kids were thrown off completely, and then we worked through it or called the help desk and realized we could get them right back on and right where they were started. You know, even though we weren't getting results, we tried to follow through, you know, on the assessment as if we were going to get every result from it. So I think getting through some of those initial little glitches were things that we were a little nervous about, but it really went a lot easier than we thought. We also went through our accommodations for students with IEPs and state assessments and we looked at the accommodations that were provided and went through. And then when we found that in 13, we weren't able to access those, you know, we got through that. It wasn't a problem, but we did have, you know, all these, you know, different remote-sized small groups in the, around the building. And that worked really well. It went a lot more smoothly, I think, than initially our nerves were showing us and we were pleased.
Great. Well, thank you for your report. We very much appreciate it. I appreciate your time this evening. Congratulations to our newest Assistant Principal. And here's to continuing a great year that's off to a great start already. So thank you. I'm going to take a five-minute recess to allow for folks to collect themselves and we will be back in five minutes. Thank you. Ventilation system for the cafeteria at Miramac High School. I would invite to the table who's already here. Business Administrator Matt Chevanelle, our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Tom Tussow, and our guests from Honeywell, Mr. Jim Lucy and Mr. Bob Marcott.
Front and center, fellows. Let me just kind of frame this off a little bit right here. You recall, we were talking about this last time, quite in-depth. We went over the CIP and we had mentioned that Gage Perry, member of the planning, School District Planning and Building Committee, had come up with a plate and frame assembly kind of design and that prompted us to ask questions and ask another question and have kind of a conversation of it. Heat wheel is kind of like, you know, Kleenex versus tissue. Kleenex is the brand name, but you really want a tissue. So we've been calling it heat wheel forever, but really what it is, is an energy recovery unit. And the heat wheel, as we now kind of understand, is such that it does not meet current code when placed in a kitchen area because of various factors that I'll let Bob Marcott, the engineer, and Jim Lucy get into. So we have an alternative design here. The price tag is still around half a million dollars, but we wanted to go over it with you and, you know, keep you fully aware of where this, where this is going, given the change in terminology that you'll see on the capital improvement plan when we hit that next. So I give it over to Jim and Bob and Tom.
Mr. Lucy, can you just make sure that's on?
I'm sorry.
Much better. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to let Bob go through three slides, my after the cover page, just to talk about existing conditions and the proposed solutions and then address any specific questions that you may have about the capital improvement project. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bob Marcott. I'm a mechanical engineer with Honeywell. And like to draw your attention, I think you all have a copy of these packages here. So if you flip through the, pass the first page, gives you a picture of the unit that's being discussed here. This is an existing 1977 vintage unit that provides ventilation air to the cafeteria. It also serves to exhaust air out of the kitchen hoods that are in the kitchen. And it provides what's called makeup air for those hoods. When you suck air out of a building through the kitchen hoods, you need to bring air into the building to make up for that. So this unit serves all those purposes. You can, what you really can't tell for sure from the picture, and you can really get a feel for it when you go up on the roof, as I've been with Tom, is the general condition of the unit. It's 1977 vintage, 37 years old. It's considered well beyond its useful service life. Equipment that sits on a roof and is exposed to the elements typically has a useful service life anywhere from 20, 25 years. It's usually unusable to see 30 years in a unit that's on the roof. 37 years, that's up there. The term that I gave to Tom the other day was, this unit doesn't owe you anything. It's provided everything, it's owed you and then some. You go to the next page, just trying to give a high-level description of what this unit is doing right now. If you need me to go into more detail, I will, but at this point, I'm going to kind of keep it high level for everybody. The blue box that you see, that's the unit that you just saw in the picture. The yellow box inside of it is what's referred to as the energy recovery wheel. So that's a device that takes air from the kitchen hoods, those green boxes and the green lines, that's exhaust air from the kitchen hoods that's passing through this energy recovery wheel. And it's taking, the unit is also taking fresh outdoor air and blowing that air into the cafeteria. And so the heat from the kitchen hoods is being recovered or exchanged. Some of that heat is being recovered or exchanged and passed into the fresh air so that you don't need to heat that fresh air as much. It doesn't recover all of the heat, it recovers a portion of the heat. So you still do need to heat that air, but you're basically taking, say, zero-degree air and bringing it up to 20, 30 degrees. Instead of having to heat that zero-degree air all the way up to room temperature, you're bringing it up to 20, 30 degrees first and then heating it. So it does recover heat. That air is supplied to the cafeteria. What's really, what's not shown here in the graphic is that the air is blown into the cafeteria and there are some grills in the wall between the cafeteria and the kitchen that basically allow that air that's blown into the cafeteria to get drawn back into the kitchen where it is the makeup air for the kitchen hoods. Okay, so it's, the kitchen and the cafeteria are combined together with this system. So that's what you have today. The system, as was mentioned by Matt earlier, is, according to current codes, is not code compliant, would not be code compliant, I should say, if you put a new system like this in today. Back when it was installed in 1977, that was before my time, but it's, in all likelihood, codes allowed it at that point in time. For quite some time now, codes have not allowed this type of system. Reason being that it is the energy recovery wheel and the components inside the rooftop unit are all areas where grease from kitchen hood operations can collect and build up over time. And that's an unsafe situation when you have grease build up. So the next page would be our proposed solution. It's comprised of a new rooftop unit on the right, which would be a unit which would, if possible, we're going to need to do some final engineering on this. We haven't done, you know, a full engineering stage on this, but there's some structural engineering involved because when you take a unit off and you put a new unit on, you got to make sure that the structure of the roof can handle it. Electrical, there'll be a full engineering team involved with this. So there'll be a new unit on the roof and our plan would be to place that unit roughly on the same footprint as the existing unit to minimize any structural impact. That unit would reconnect to the supply ductwork that's blowing air into the cafeteria. So we would reuse that supply ductwork. We would remove all of the existing exhaust ductwork that goes from the kitchen exhaust hoods up to the current unit because that ductwork is currently, does not meet current codes. It's supposed to be welded stainless steel ductwork. So that would need to be removed and replaced with welded ductwork. So the blue line that you see, that would be new ductwork. And then to the left, the two pieces of equipment that you see to the left would be dedicated exhaust fans that would, you've got two kitchen hoods, so we'd have an exhaust fan tied into each kitchen hood. In addition, because we're taking away a system that has been recovering heat for you for X number of years, we would put in a new code-compliant system that would basically slow down the speed of those exhaust fans when it sees the intensity of the cooking operations has decreased. And the way that it does that is inside the kitchen hoods, we put two devices. We put a smoke sensor, basically electric eyes that will sense smoke, and we also put heat detectors in the kitchen hoods to detect the amount of heat that's being radiated from the equipment below. So if that control system sees either a large amount of smoke or sees a large amount of heat or both, it will tell those exhaust fans to speed up and exhaust more air because it means that there's a more intense cooking operation going on. If it sees neither, it will slow down those exhaust fans and also it will tell the new rooftop ventilation unit to slow down, not bring in as much outdoor makeup air and that you would need to heat. That's the basics of the system. We can get into any more details that you'd like, but I wanted to give you a high-level explanation.
That's wonderful. Any questions from the board? Mr. Schneider.
For anybody that sat in the cafeteria for any length of time trying to have a meeting in the evenings, under the proposed solution, your very last page, the very last bullet is of interest because the design of the new rooftop air handling in consideration of previous noise issues. Now, from what you just described, where the sensing of the exhaust fans and then being able to manipulate that, I'm assuming that means when you're in an evening where there's no activity going on in the kitchen, the fan should run at a much lower rate and therefore the sound is down?
Absolutely. Yeah, Marge did not hesitate to let us know about the noise issue. So that, so in addition to those two exhaust fans having what's called variable frequency drives or speed drives on them, which will slow them down, the new air handling unit will also have a variable frequency drive. So you're correct. When there's no cooking going on, this new ventilation unit is going to be designed, its peak design situation would be when both hoods are under an intense cooking situation, you know, 11 o'clock in the morning, you know, during the school day. So if there's no cooking going on, this unit can run at a much lower speed. The other thing that I did not mention is that this system will be tied into the graphics, the DDC control graphics system that is in the school right now. Tom will have the ability to manipulate things. If it turns out that the speed that the unit is running on is still too, too high and is still creating noise, Tom will have the ability to override that and force it to go to even a lower speed.
And one other question I have, so this doesn't heat the cafeteria in the area. This worries about replenishing the air that the exhaust fans go out. There's another heating source in the cafeteria beyond this, right?
Correct, correct. But this, but this will have a heating coil in it because this is going to take your air and it's going to, it's going to blow it out at room temperature here.
Right, okay. Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Vice Chair Byrne.
Well, first of all, I'm glad to know that I'm not old, I'm vintage based upon the description of our heat wheel. So that's exciting. A couple of questions I had were regarding operating efficiencies. Obviously, we talked about what will be gained, but will it realize the savings to the district? And can you kind of give an idea of that?
Yeah, the net impact is going to be an additional energy usage because right now you've got a unit that saves you energy all the time that it's running, as opposed to a system that's only going to save you energy when the intensity of the cooking operation is reduced. So, which isn't going to be all the time. We don't have final numbers on that. That's going to take some discussions with the cooking, the kitchen staff to find out, get some feedback from them. There's going to be some assumptions involved here. There's no way to know for sure that, you know, there's 50 minutes of the day that's this intense. So we're going to have to have some discussions with the kitchen staff and come to a reasonable and realistic calculations for what the savings of this would be. But we feel that you're going to, although this system will save energy compared to one that doesn't have the speed control and the smoke sensors and the heat sensor, it will not save as much energy as what you've got right now, but it will be a code-compliant, a new code-compliant system.
Code compliance is good, yeah. And I know the one thing we have to consider is the district as well, and I know we talked about on the Honeywell project, as we still call it, air quality is of value to the quality of an education that we're delivering. And, you know, when it comes to the cafeteria, we're talking about it being, you know, the place for your morning bagel, but it's also the place where you do your last-minute studying for tests, your study halls. It's used throughout the day for educational purposes, not just for eating. So as we're, you know, creating an environment for our students, we have to consider the air quality in that space as much as a classroom, really, because there's a lot of students that use that space for learning.
Part of the new controls will include a carbon dioxide sensor in the space and that's an indicator of the quantity of people in the, obviously, when you breathe, carbon dioxide. So when it senses higher levels of carbon dioxide, it will automatically increase the amount of ventilation air going into the space.
Well, that's really good. You should have put that in the thing. I'm telling you, that's really good.
Tried to condense it, yeah.
I know, but that's really good information to have. I mean, so, you know, it's definitely, you know, we're not shocked we're not compliant. I mean, 77 for crying out loud, so. And it's really, you know, what you came forth with is within the range of what we were expecting to pay for a heat wheel that doesn't exist anymore, anyway, for just a simple replacement. So I'm very comfortable with what you brought forward and it's great information and gives us a lot to work with. So thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions from the board? And I apologize if this was asked and answered, but the other option that when we spoke about the capital improvement plan and this, this function here, the plate and frame, I think is what it was called, did we cover the differences between them and?
That was based upon putting the plate and frame in the cafeteria area, which you can't do now, anyway. So we didn't talk about that at all as far as comparative.
Well, we did look into it when we were looking at different options and that was one of the considerations. In this case, it doesn't be code compliant, so it was eliminated. And then we moved on to this, to the conclusion that we came up with.
We briefly considered an option of, people are familiar with the term unit ventilator. Lot of classrooms and a lot of school buildings in the state have these, basically a big box that sits up against the wall that blows air. That's, that's probably the least expensive way to ventilate a classroom. However, the amount of air that you're, that would be necessary for makeup air for those two kitchen hoods, you'd need more than a dozen of these, of those minutes in air. So it would not be realistic to go that route, yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you for the information. This is extremely helpful to us and as I think Mr. Chevanelle mentioned, we're taking up the capital improvement plan next on our agenda and so having this info is very timely for us. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Which takes us now to item number nine on tonight's agenda, reconsideration of the capital improvement plan for 2015 to 2020. As Business Administrator Chevanelle puts the capital improvement plan up on the screen, I'll just remind folks that we heard from Business Administrator Chevanelle and Director of Maintenance Tussow at our last meeting, the capital improvement plan that was reviewed and approved by the Planning and Building Committee, District's Planning and Building Committee. Tonight is our night to review, amend if we see fit, and move forward this capital improvement plan. And then the next step for it would be to go to the town's planning board. As we go through the process, certainly Mr. Tussow and Mr. Chevanelle are here to answer any questions that arise. If there are any amendments that are, that board members are interested in making, I will entertain a motion, a second discussion, and a vote. And I would just ask that when you make a motion, that you are specific to both the description of the capital improvement as well as the year and the adjustment that you're making. So, with that, are there any questions or motions on the table? Mr. Powell had his hand up.
I apologize, I didn't bring my CIP from the last meeting. Is there any difference in the HVAC equipment line?
No.
So, dollar-wise, it's the same right now as far as we know? Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Vice Chair Barnes?
Well, as we looked, as I looked at this in preparation of tonight's meeting, the one thing I noticed, and I, we look at the CIP all the time, what we have to look at is two things. We have to look at what's going to fall into our operating budget and what's going to fall into a bonding circumstance. And when I looked at this, when I'm looking at 2015-16, you'll see a total of $3,124,651. But realistically, it's really about $1,612,000 that would go toward an operating budget expenditure. That one point, five, almost, you know, $1,512,000, that's considered the SAU office, the SUE SPED office, and that would be bonded. So, we really have to look at, you know, the peaks and valleys. And when you look at 2016-2017, we're looking at a $2.9 million operating budget period. And our, there's nothing that would be bonded throughout the CIP plan for '16-17, with a large consideration being $1.685 million for the track and field. So, we need to look at the big picture. And that's something where I think we need to, not, less so a shift, but more so, I think we need to look at a redirection of expenditure so that we can plan accordingly. And, you know, I went back to 2012 where we talked about the track and field with our, our planning and building committee, and everything was about turf. And turf, according to your report, would last about 12 to 15 years, and given that, it'd be a $60,000 a year expenditure per year when you spread out that purchase over the life of the, of the field. But when you look at the actual maintenance of the field, it runs about $30,000 a year. So, I have to look at our fiscal responsibility here and how we need to refocus maybe what we're doing now, what we have in place now, because I know, Matt, you also take care of the spreadsheet that talks about our bonded debt plus our capital improvements and what the real big picture is, that maybe we need to look at a big project like track and field with a synthetic turf once our bonds are starting to get paid off. We have our middle school, we have our high school, we have our, the Honeywell project that we just talked about. So, we have a couple of projects that are getting paid off over the next few years. And I think after those things kind of work their way down, that's the time to maybe look at synthetic turf, because I think we need to start to control the costs. We own this document, and when we own this document, we own the $1.685 million that we're scheduling to spend next year, and I think that's irresponsible. I mean, when we're looking at, if we take that out, we're looking at $1.2 million for next year instead of 2.9. And I think that's something we need to consider as a board.
So, do you have a motion?
I move, based upon some feedback I got, I move that we reduce the MHS track and field upgrade from $1.685 million to $200,000, which would be the cost of the track which actually showed a, an established need in the planning and building committee report.
Okay. So, hold on. So, if I understand the motion, I want to make sure I have it right.
That's fine.
You're reducing the 1.6 million that's in 2016-17 for the MHS track field upgrade to 200,000, which I believe you said represents the track portion alone.
Correct.
Do you have an adjustment for the remainder or just to remove the field entirely?
At this point, we'd look to remove the field entirely.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second for purpose of discussion.
Made by Mr. Schneider.
Yep.
Okay, so would you like to speak to the motion?
I would. And I see Matt, I think he's chomping at the bit too, but I'll just, I really think that when you talk about the long-term, the field showed, according to the report from 2012, that we are in a position that we have a decent field. We just don't have a decent track, and that's what this report shows. If things have changed where the field cannot be maintained for $30,000 a year, then that's information I need to have. But if that's not the case, if it still is in fairly good condition as this report states from the planning and building committee, then I think we need to look at, you know, not hitting the taxpayer with a spike in their taxes next year, which is what an operating expenditure of $3 million for capital improvements would do.
Further discussion. Mr. Schneider.
So, I'm in support of looking holistically at the track and the turf separately, because I know that that, at the planning and building that was talked about. But I'm, I'm challenging, or I'm questioning, not challenging, that's not the right word, questioning whether the figure is correct, because I know in the various discussions that we've had, that if we, we've talked about the scenario of doing the track first and then the field later, right? And we also know in planning and building, they've, they have talked a bit about looking outside the box to say, what can we do with the field with, more creative ways to fund or whatever like that, they've talked about it. But in our discussions, we've said that if you're going to put the track first, there are things that you can do to prepare for whatever you might be doing to the field later on. You gotta worry about a bridge over the track, but things like pre-installing drainage underneath the track when you got it all ripped up for the track is a consideration as well. So, if we're going to break the two apart, I really want to make sure that we know what the right cost is to budget for the track to prepare for anything we might do with the field. So, the $200,000, I don't know if it's real or not based on all that analysis. I would want to make sure that if we're going to do this, that we do it in a way that's, I mean, to get to Shannon's point, if we're going to do it to be conscientious and all that other stuff, let's make sure we're being realistic in terms of what we budget and what the risks and all that stuff are, and so we've all got that data in front of us.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Tussaud wants to respond to your question, I'm assuming around cost. Okay.
Currently, my conversations with the track company said that approximately, we're somewhere around $220,000 for the track replacement itself. They did not take in the factor of building the bridge or building a structure over the track to protect it afterward, you know, that we would have to do after. So, the real correct number, I'm thinking, is somewhere between 220 and 250 is what I would say, that it's probably closer to the number that we'd want to go with, at least at this point.
Sure. So, you talked about the bridge, does that also include putting in drainage underneath the track, like running the piping and stuff, just in, because remember, we talked about if you have to put drainage in for a turf field, or even if you want to redo the grass field, we talked about putting drainage pipes in under the track while the track is ripped up, so.
Correct. And now, and when we do the track, it's time to do it. That's the number that I felt they were talking about for 220, and I'm thinking there's probably $30,000 possibly in there for other issues such as drainage and stuff like that, or other things that we don't know right now that we're going to have to put in.
So, 250 is a number you'd be more comfortable with than 200?
The number that we talked about was anywhere from 200,000 to 250. It's fine, we, you know, to air, we don't know what the drainage would look like. We have to have that engineered in, in concert with the field company, talking to the track company. So, we, I think we would feel a little bit more comfortable having the 250 number in its place as opposed to 200, to be able to get the job done to your satisfaction.
With, with an eye forward as to potential things.
With an eye forward to the future, yes.
Go ahead, Shannon.
I was willingness to amend my motion to 250 if you could amend your second. Thank you.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Ms. Gualyumi?
Well, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more to Shannon's inquiry about the current status of the field. If there's any new information or new additional information.
I think we're still operating under the assumption that it probably has two more years left into it before that the track company feels that it's going to be unrepairable and that we should be looking to replace it in that two-year window. So, we do have this year, we have the following year, and then the year after that is when it needs to be done.
And that's the track, right?
That's the track only. The infield itself, we're still managing. We, we mow it, we cut it, it's, it's fine, it's operating as usual. We don't have an issue with it at this point.
Yeah, with the current, with the current maintenance schedule that they have the track on and the current utilization schedule that they have it on, it could last into perpetuity. I mean, it's the utilization that keeps it going.
The, the, my understanding was, when, when planning and building presented the plan and looked at turf as an option for the field, it wasn't necessarily to address a specific issue with the grass field. That maintenance of the grass field could occur. What that maintenance, however, encompasses is allowing that field to rest and not be treaded on when it's wet and, you know, between seasons. And so, what winds up happening is, and we've had reports from the town fields committee saying that there are, there are a lack of rectangular fields and also diamond fields in town. So, we have high school teams, you know, for instance, the soccer team does not practice at the high school. They go up to Reed's Ferry School to practice and they play games over at Anheuser-Busch. We have a marching band that marches on the field at halftime of football games that doesn't practice on that field, but rather practices in the parking lot. And so, the idea of turf for that field was not so much to address the condition per se, but to increase availability of, of the space so that the lacrosse team could play there, the football team, the soccer team, the field hockey team could all play in that space.
And to save on maintenance, right? Because you would have a reduced maintenance.
And there's some level of reduced maintenance, although it's somewhat marginal.
Marginal. I would say the biggest issue would be the use of the field, utilization, since it's in such close proximity to the school, there's not transportation of teams and all that stuff. It's just a huge, be a big impact for a school to be able to use the field that's so close to it on a continuous basis and that we wouldn't have to make hard decisions sometimes in saying, no, you can't do that, you can't do this because we need time. And we, and we do do that, and we tell people, you know, and sometimes it goes over well, sometimes it's not. But everybody does understand that we just have one main field that's close to our building, that's all we have.
Any other comment? Vice Chair Barnes?
And, I mean, honestly, when planning and building came to us, and I, I have visions of Boise State Blue out there, you know, with the big Merrimack M, and I would still love to see that. What I'm looking at right now is the responsibility to the taxpayer. And to go from, and remember, we saw the operating budget for the, for the business of our district that has its own fluctuations and its own demands, that's about academics as well. We have, if, with 2015-16, the way it stands now, it's 1.6 point, $1.6 million in operating expenses in this, in large capital projects that need to get done to maintain our infrastructure. Next year, without the field, it's 1.3 million. With the field, it's 2.9 million. Basic math says you're getting a tax spike for that, and then it's going to come down to 1.283 million, let's say 1.3 million, down to a million and up to 1.5 million. But that, when you have a spike and a dip and a spike and a dip, for a lot of families, that, that's impactful to them being able to afford their homes and prepare for their, for their mortgage. And that's, that's really the motivation, because branding-wise, vision-wise, style-wise, maintenance-wise, I think, you know, the turf has a lot of, brings a lot of value, but what it doesn't do is come cheap. It's 1, 1.3 million to put a turf field on of that 1.685 million, or 1.3 million really. So, what we're looking at is a lot of money, and we're asking the taxpayers to put it in our operating budget, because when you talk about something used every day, and it is a maintenance expense to put a field in, it's not bondable, because by the time that bond is done, so is the field based on the natural life of an artificial turf being about 15 years. So, by the time a bond is paid off, we're looking for a new, a new turf field. And we can't keep doing that and bonding and bonding and bonding for something that's, you know, truly an operating expense. So, that is my motivation. It's not because I don't like turf, I don't like the thought of Boise State Blue out there, because I really do like the idea of it. But, and I take it the Boise State Blue isn't going well with everybody. But needless to say, I just, I really am concerned for the taxpayer on this one, and that's, that's my, the heart of my motivation.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
So, if we play this out.
Play it out.
Play it out. By removing, if we take the motion in '16-17, we bring it from 2.867 actually down to 1.432, because you take away the 1.6, you add the 250,000. I'm uncomfortable leaving the field off completely from the CIP, because I believe it needs to be addressed. Now, to make Tom cringe, or whatever he's going to do, in '17-18 or '18-19, it's very feasible, we could slam two roofs together into one year and put the field in the opposite year to level set the operating budget impact. It would go 1.6, 1.4, 1.8, 1.6, 1.4. It'd be something like that, should we combine some roofs and add the field from a planning perspective. Now, obviously, the proof will be in the pudding as we go along, but, so my, my recommendation would be sort of, and I guess I would be making a motion after we do this one, because the motion on the table is to drop it from 1.685 for the combined to make a track only at 250. I would make, I would be making, to offset this, a motion to combine, as best we say, I mean, if, probably the roofs earlier in the field or something like that, but placeholders in the CIP to show that continuation moving forward. That would be what I would propose next to sort of match this.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? I understand the intent of the motion, and I very much like what Andy just said. I don't want to lose sight of the track and field. The other thing that I think that the track and, I'm sorry, the field, I'm combining the terms, that the field has going for it is that this is a town-wide need. There are organizations in the town like the MYA, there are clubs in the area, et cetera, that, that would use these fields if they were available, and so there may be other opportunities to offset that funding. So, I, I like the idea of addressing the track, which is an immediate need, a safety need, and being responsible to the taxpayers, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we do have this need in town for a field. Frankly, we have it for our, our own programs right at the high school, whether it's, you know, the band, the soccer team, the lacrosse team, field hockey team, who only typically get to use that field maybe once a season. And so, I don't want to lose sight of it either. So, with that, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of amending 2016-2017 track and field to be $250,000 for the track alone signify by saying aye. I'm sorry? Who, okay? And those opposed? So, that motion carries 4-1-0 with the chair in opposition, and so I will now entertain the next motion. Mr. Schneider, you at least said you were interested in doing one.
I'm checking my math. I mean, it's not quite as level as I thought, but I'm going to do the motion anyway. So, I move, now, these are rough numbers, because we're looking out in the future, but if you assume that the 1.685- out in the future. But if you assume that the 1.685 minus 250 brings it down to 1.435.
1,435, yeah.
So, what I want to do is in 2016-17, 2017-18, apologies, to put the field in at 1.435, I'd like to remove the Thornton's Ferry roof from 17-18, but add it to the Muse roof in 18-19. Sort of simple as that. Add 1.435 for the track in 17-18 and then move the Thornton's Ferry roof to 18-19 along with the G-Muse roof.
Okay. So, I don't have my calculator, but that's roughly 1.1 million then in 2018-2019 for roofs and 1.4 million for the field in 2017-2018. Do I have that correct?
Yeah. It makes, just so you look at the bottom run rate, it actually blips more in 17-18. It makes it about 2.1 million overall for the, and then as opposed to about 1.6 million in 2018-19. So, it's not as smooth as I want, but the field is so large that...
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Gualyumi?
A second for discussion.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to it?
Been speaking to it for a while, but I think the net-net is, is that we're looking at a five-year capital improvement plan. I'm not 100% sure this is where they need to fall because we know there will be other things that come through. But for planning purposes, I wanted to keep the field on the CIP. Try to do a little bit of a balance by combining roofs if possible. I know it's not completely smooth, but I think it at least keeps all of our investments on this five-year plan, so we don't lose it. So, that's the reason that I did it.
Okay. Further discussion? I have a, oh, well, let me ask my question and then we'll move forward with yours. The Thornton's Ferry roof, generally speaking, I'm not a big fan of delaying roof replacement projects. What's your assessment of that roof and pushing it from 17-18 to 18-19?
I would be comfortable doing that. And certainly, as long as we capture the roofs in the following year, meaning that it's not a total push-off, it's more of a reconsolidating it. And at this point in time, I think we're going to be okay with that. I don't have a problem.
Right. Because the other option is you move the roofs in a year earlier and move the field out one more year, which actually, if you look at the numbers, levels it out a little bit more. But again, we're looking this far out. I mean, I don't know that it's really binding us into this as much as it is just planning ahead, so.
Question had to be asked. Vice Chair Barnes?
I'm playing with my calculator right now on my phone, so, just so I can kind of go through for discussion what we're dealing with here. Plus 250. Okay. Based on the adjustments we've made so far, and if this one passes, our CIP for 16-17 would be 1,432,112. 17-18 would jump to 2,142,500. And then 18-19 reduces back down to 1,639,285, leaving 19-20 untouched at 1,484,140. So, we're going, we're kind, we are spiking still, but, again, 1, 4, 3, 2, 1, 1, 2. You wouldn't be able to read this thing if you saw it, you know, live. But we're still getting over a half million dollar spike to almost a half million dollar reduction. Over a half million dollar spike. So, it's like 700,000 up from 16-17 to 17-18 to reduce by 500,000 to 18-19. So, we are, we're going to see ripples. We're not going to see spikes and dips, but we will see ripples. So, I try to think about that as we deliberate as well. I just wanted to add that for discussion purposes.
Yeah, just to close on that, is, there's no perfect, I mean, you could start playing games with moving the paving from the, move the bus loop out to 18-19, so you do a bunch of paving projects. I mean, we could do that. I'd prefer us not to micromanage the capital plan that far out at this point. I mean, just because there's unknowns. We don't know, you know, we could have a problem with paving that we've got to move things, but anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask a question, Matt? Is it possible to take a five-year bond?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, if we had a field that was, had a life of 15-plus years potentially, right, and we plan to pay it off in about a third of its lifetime, we could do that?
Yes.
And we would have an estimated annual cost of approximately 300,000-400,000 on that project, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, that might be a funding option for us to, to deal with spikes year-over-year? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Well, I agree. I don't like the spiking. And I was just doing a quick calculation. And if we, if we brought the bus, the MHS paving forward, then there'd only be a $300,000 spike and then back dip again, as opposed to a half million. So, I don't know, we need to vote on this as it is and, or make an amendment to this, or...
The motion on the table stands. We need to vote on the motion.
Okay. I call the question.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the Thornton's Ferry roof in the amount of 576,055, I didn't bring my reading glasses tonight, into 2018-2019 with the Muse roof, and then placing the 1,435,000 for the field upgrade signify, in, into 2017-2018 signify by saying aye? Opposed? None? That motion carries 5-0-0. Mr. Powell?
I move that we take the MHS paving at $225,000 that's currently in 2017-18, move it up one year to 2016-17. And by my rough calculations, that would change the bottom line of 16-17 to 1.657, and it would change 17-18 to 1.917 and some change. That's it.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Mr. Schneider? Mr. Powell, would you like to speak to it?
Yes. As I alluded to earlier, this levels out the spike even more to where there's about a $300,000 difference from 16-17 to 17-18, and then back down again 300,000 from 17-18 to 18-19.
Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, it goes 1.6, 1.6, 1.9, 1.6, rounded. So, it's smoother. I think for planning purposes, it's, I'm okay with this, but I can guarantee it's going to change next year. So, will we look ahead for our five years? But I think to put a stake in the ground and represent, I mean, I'm assuming because we moved this in, it's not a bad thing. There's no, it means potholes will get fixed earlier, so, and so we don't need to ask, so, okay.
You can. You're welcome to ask. Ms. Gualyumi, did you have your hand up? Oh, okay. Vice Chair Barnes? Okay. I will call that question then. All those in favor of moving the MHS bus loop in front of school paving project from 2017-2018 into 2016-2017 signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? None? That motion carries 5-0-0. Are there any other motions to be made? Mr. Schneider?
I move we vote and approve, vote on the capital improvement plan as the way it sits.
Excellent. Is there a second? Ms. Gualyumi, would you like to discuss your motion? No? Okay. We will call the question then. All those in favor of approving the capital improvement plan as amended signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 5-0-0. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chevigny. Thank you, Mr. Tusa. And that takes us to item number 10 on tonight's agenda, Updates to the Special Education Manual. Mr. Fabrizio?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I gave you your, let's see, your 10:15 nighttime reading as we have right here in front of you. I think every time I come here, I deliver more information for you to read, and life is so in the world of special education. I came earlier in the year during the summer and talked to you about the Merrimack School. This is going through our focus monitoring with the state of New Hampshire. And part of that in our focus monitoring is the compliance piece of the two-part process. And in the compliance piece, one of the things that I am required to do is submit a certain group of policies and procedures and our forms and to the state, the state one month prior to them coming to visit us. So, in doing so, I started about last June, going through everything and trying to say, okay, where are we and what's, what's in shape and what needs to be modified. And in talking to Superintendent Chaffery and consulting with Santina Thibodeau, who is the head of Special Education at the state, she said that I need to update some of the, of our district Special Education manual. And these edits are really mainly, I'll walk through them briefly with you what the edits are. But what they are, are the changing position of myself from Mr. St. Gene, some coordinators who have, who have either retired or left the district, and new coordinators replaced them. So, their names are different on the docket. We've updated our professional development plan. You'll see that being different. There's been an update to the state regulations. You'll see those noted in there. And I'll just briefly walk through some of those changes. So, right away on the, on page two, you'll see that my name is listed along with Stacy Conti, Meredith Devine, Lisa Frenette, and Sherri Goldberg in their new positions. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way with these changes. On page four, you'll see that the New Hampshire rules were amended as of May 15, 2014, and I made that change. On page 10, it's in red versus yellow because I'm not updating or changing anything at this time. However, that's to note that I mentioned over the summer that we need to have a records, we have to cover a policy around record retention in the district. And you'll see me coming forward with that first reading in the next couple of months to do that piece. And it's in process now, but it's nothing we need today. I just need to note that, that that may change again down the road. And then on page 18, I just had to talk about professional development in the district, and you'll see there listed some of the things that are going to happen throughout the course of the year or begun to happen.
Mr. Fabrizio?
Yes.
I wonder, as I read this, I wondered if it didn't make sense to talk about aligning IEP goals with state standards more generally as opposed to Common Core as you stated there, right? Because isn't that the effort, really?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So, the answer is, the state standards do align with the Common Core, so the Common Core is aligned with the state standards. So, kind of, they are interchangeable in that language. I could certainly add that as an amendment to both of those.
I'm just thinking outside of English and math, where the state standards are not Common Core, would it be more clear if it, it's only a question?
Yep.
Mr. Powell?
I agree with you, but for a different, a different reason. The state standards are always going to be the state standards, no matter how much they change. It may change to something other than Common Core farther down the road. And for that reason, it just would make sense to not have to go back in and amend an entire document just for two words.
Well, and again, and just to speak to this, this is just professional development activities for 2014-15 school year.
So, it is very specific to that.
That was the workshop that we have a trainer presenting to the high school.
Okay. I will rescind my suggestion. Makes perfect sense.
That's what, so, this document does need to be amended. Pretty much, I'll be back and do this every few years when we have to do this. Then on page 27, this had to do with a change in the regulations, and it talks about public insurance. There was a memo from the state, memo number two this year, which talked about changing legislation, which had to do with private insurance. And that was just amendment to be current with the new law and new language. Then on page 29, one of the new requirements is that we offer just basically to parents where they'll be able to get free legal advice that they need so if there was dispute or through the IEP process. And that's in there included. Page 47, it's just, again, a chart the state asks us to include into our manuals now that's a little more user-friendly, that has all the information in one chart about the special education process. And then finally, your last appendixy, you will see it is, excuse me, Appendix D, the New Hampshire Special Education Receiver Safeguard Book, which was just recently, which was amended in December 2011. And that has been included. So, I ask along with this that you please waive the two-week rule and consider these changes tonight if that is possible.
Wonderful. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Powell?
I move that we accept the updates in the Special Education Manual as presented and for the move that we waive the two-week rule.
Is there a second made by Ms. Gualyumi? Discussion, Mr. Powell?
No, thank you.
Okay. Discussion for the board? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of approving the district Special Education Manual as presented, waiving the two-week rule signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 5-0-0. Mr. Fabrizio, thank you for making this very straightforward for us to review and, and good luck.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 11, Update on the Educator Performance and Evaluat, eh, tongue twister, Educator Performance and Evaluation Process. Superintendent Marge Chaffery.
Thank you. As you know, I'm working with the Merrimack Teachers Association on bringing forth the new teacher or educator evaluation and performance model. At the end of 2013-14, you remember that we had a formal evaluation done by evaluators at Learning Innovations WestEd. And off of that formal evaluation, we realized that we needed to go back to the team that put the model together and have them look at three or four items that had surfaced whereby the model might need to be modified in some way. In addition, off of the pilot, we realized that we had had 36 evaluators in the district and a number of teachers, 45, I believe, who had gone through the system and had given lots of insight into the model itself. It became apparent to me and the leadership team that it would be in our best interest at the beginning of this year to ensure that we had set up a training mechanism whereby all of the professional staff could have a chance to be with our trainer, if you will, to go through the model and to be able to ask clarifying questions and get more insight into the new model. So, what I have suggested for this year is the following, that for formal evaluation, we would continue to use the Hunter evaluation model, which we have used over the past... that for formal evaluation, we would continue to use the Hunter evaluation model, which we have used over the past 30 years. And from October to January, that we would ensure that all professional staff have a day of formal training with Susan Filani from Learning Innovations WestEd to be able to come even more familiar with the model through various exercises in a given day. And that the EPEC committee also be convened, it is also, it is met once, but if it needs to meet additional times, to be able to look in a formal way at those items that were raised up to either modify the evaluation mechanism or not, but to take a stand on all the items that were raised up. And to ask the school board and the teachers' association to take a formal vote on the model in February with the idea that we'd use the remainder of the year to make for ready and that in 2015-16, we would implement the new model. As you can see, I'm into positive presupposition, which means that I'm very hopeful that with all the effort made, that we will be ready for the vote and that the vote will push us forward. I do feel that this is a very, very important time in Merrimack. This model is so important, so many people have put so much time and effort into it that I feel, I think it's said that you need to market anything new twice as much time as you put into the development. So therefore, it took one year to develop. And I feel that the time put into marketing it and expressing it and making it known is time well spent. And I hope that you would concur with that thinking. I am making my way around and speaking to each set of faculty members so that they understand the intent. And this week, I'll be halfway there. And thus far, I have received a very positive response. So I am prepared to entertain any questions or thoughts you might have.
Questions or thoughts from the board? Vice Chair Barnes.
As we're continuing to evaluate, I know we talked in the high school about having kind of parallel grading. We talked about having a numerical grade and then a competency grade. Is there the opportunity to have kind of what an evaluation would look like under the new structure as they're getting evaluated under the old one?
I think, Shannon, in this particular case, it's very necessary to be very clear about evaluation. You need to make sure that you have a bona fide system in place and so on when you're doing teacher evaluation. So the new system has not been formally adopted. And I think we felt that doing an additional pilot was extremely difficult for this 36 evaluators. I have great regard for what they're up against. And I think for what we learned this last spring, I think it will definitely help us for our future. But to run two systems simultaneously, one that's bona fide and one that's not, I don't think would be in our best interest. Is that what you were asking?
It was what I was asking. Okay.
Any other question or comment? Ms. Gualyumi.
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, the training sounds like a good idea. I mean, change is hard, and it sounds like a big component of that would be change management as well as just learning the new structure. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think, again, for the educators that participated, I mean, we learned a lot for them. And one of the things that we learned that's extremely valuable is the amount of time spent in dialoguing between the evaluator and the evaluator T. That's definitely a very, very strong component. But there are other elements that we just need to take a closer look at. And for that, I think that EPEC committee is extremely important. I mean, we're still doing in-depth evaluation. We still have a written remediation plan. And I felt strongly that we just could not live in the world of two systems, especially one that is not bona fide, especially when you're doing something as important as educator evaluation. So I think we'll definitely make the best use of our spring after the vote is taken. But right now, it's completely about training and making sure that all 320 professional staff understand this model.
Sounds like it's important to get it right.
Mr. Snyder.
So I'm going to apologize. It's late. I'm hearing most of the words, but... So when you talked about the vote, what was the vote going to be taken by whom?
The vote will be taken in February by the Merrimack Teachers Association and the Merrimack School Board.
Okay, right. So one of the questions that I've got is, is that as you go through the implementation, the all the testing and the sort of the beta testing, if you use a computer term, are the results then shared back to the committee? Either the full membership of the committee, including all the different reps from the different walks of life that we built the Performer Evaluation Committee?
The evaluation is online, so...
Well, no, no, no. Let me state it clearly.
Okay.
So there are conclusions that you're drawing. There are things that you're learning from the process to do this. The way that the process worked, at least the way, and since you're our rep, Davis, you can chime in. The committee worked with administration, with the union and things, as well as parent reps and others to create what was there. And now you've gone off and done testing and you've done evaluation on it and stuff. Are the reasons, are you planning to sort of get back together as a committee to look at what's learned? Are you accomplishing, is the committee satisfied that what we're going to implement sort of meets what the original goals were and things like that? I'm just, it's sort of a check and balance from how we started. I mean, we started with a group of parents and educators crafting. And now we've sort of grown, grown, test, test. Does that group get back together to say, are we achieving what we wanted to when we started all this?
Mark, yeah, do you want to talk about the report and how that folds in with the EPEC committee's work?
Yep. So as you know, in the spring, starting in early May, we had our, the pilot of the system that was developed. And then all the participants then were part of survey and focus groups. So there was an anonymous survey and then focus groups. And then all of the data from that was compiled into a report that's now online. And the summary of that report was reviewed by EPEC in June. And then EPEC decided which among the things that were observed, there were no recommendations in the pilot and in the summary. There were just observations. And from those observations, the EPEC committee, including all the people that you mentioned, took under consideration which of those observations we would take under for further refinement. There were probably four or five items that we, that EPEC decided we would take under advisement for possible refinement. That process of refinement has already begun because EPEC met just last week and began to review those things again and have laid out a timeline for the fall for the actual work of that refinement. So the same committee that's been in place for all this time continues to be the operational group for that refinement based on the survey results. And we've backwards mapped from February so that we will be sure that it is all complete, not only clearly in time for February, but well in advance because the training that the superintendent referenced is going to start in October. And so it will be, the bulk of that work is hoped to be completed, you know, by October or in the fall. So all of that is underway.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the same sort of cross-section of people, you know, that sort of kicked it off.
The committee is the committee.
The committee is the committee. And you're giving me a nice opportunity to thank them again because this has been a tremendous commitment.
Oh.
And they have, every time they've been asked to convene, they've done so. And they do it, you know, after work. They come, they take days off from work. They come, they meet. We met from four to eight just last Thursday night. They stayed beyond eight o'clock, most of them, because they just wanted to continue to work. So that same group that the board put in place is operational now. That's a great testament to that group.
Right. And what I wanted to make sure is that they followed this all the way through because they put so much into this. I wanted to make sure they followed it through, that if they had some opinions, they were heard, that they were part of the process. That, to me, that's the most important part is that, you know, because for a while, it then went off to the testing and the evaluation and the piloting. But then to be able to then come back and say, you know, we sort of, these are the tweaks we'd like to see. These are the observations we've got. But, you know, they want to bang the champagne bottle on the bow of the boat, so to speak, when it's all done.
Absolutely right. Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I'm glad you made the statement that you did about the committee. And as much as making sure that those are the ones who followed it through, I also wouldn't fault them if they didn't because it's been a commitment that's gone beyond what we originally asked of the group. I think, you know, I made the statement when the pilot evaluation results were shared that actually I saw more positive in that report than I did negative. While it was very comprehensive and it laid out a number of issues, what you heard was educators seeing the value in having those rich discussions about instruction. And yes, can we make certain things clearer and more understandable? And how do we manage time to have those discussions? Those are all solvable problems. And I think, you know, if everyone is focused, and I think with the effort that's going on to educate everyone on the process, I think we'll get there. If everyone is focused on the fact that what we have, even as it is, is a really good starting place. And any evaluation system is something that improves over time, right? You learn from it, as we learned from the pilot, we'll learn from implementing it. But good enough is sometimes the right answer as opposed to waiting for even better. So I'm quite encouraged by the work and I know the effort that it's going to take for us to get there. But it's very important. And the reality is, we have to do this, right? We have to do something. The status quo isn't an option. So, thank you. And that takes us to item number 12 on tonight's agenda, Request for New Hampshire School Board Association NHSBA Resolutions. In your packet, you will see a letter that I received from the New Hampshire School Boards Association requesting proposed resolutions by the date of October 24, 2014. As you know, we have the ability, although we're not required, to propose resolutions that get sent to the delegate assembly to be voted on in January of all of the member school boards. At this time, they're seeking to see if we have any proposed resolutions. And so at our next meeting on October 6, I will solicit those. As you know, Vice Chair Barnes is both our liaison to the National School Boards Association. What did I say?
National.
Oh, I'm sorry. New Hampshire. New Hampshire. Well, you know what? Congratulations. You didn't get the memo? She is our liaison to the New Hampshire School Boards Association and also sits on the executive board of the group. So if you have a resolution, please be prepared to share it with the group next week. Or at our next meeting, not next week. I won't be here next week. Takes us to item number 13, Other Correspondence. We did receive a letter from the Merrimack High School and Middle School Track Booster Club urging us to move the track forward in the capital improvement plan and to put it in the operating budget. Not aware of any other correspondence we've received. Has anybody received correspondence? Okay. Seeing none, that will take us to comments. Any comments from the board? Why don't we do Mr. Powell first?
I just wanted to address the comment that was made earlier in public session, how I appreciate coming forward and making the comments that Mrs. Merchant did regarding the setup at voting day at the upper elementary school. This is something that all of us have struggled, all of us on the board have struggled with for some time, balancing the need to provide the space versus the safety of the students. The board is committed without a shadow of doubt to the safety of the students and the personnel in that building, as we are in all the district buildings. And I'm hoping that we can use this as a springboard to open discussions with the moderator once again about this to find a solution. While I'm not in favor, it's well-known that I'm not in favor of extending the school calendar any further than it has to. It may be a consideration that we have to look at at this time after all others are exhausted.
Thank you. Any other comments? Set your hand up. Vice Chair Barnes.
Use my pen. I was following on, actually. I made these notes early tonight. I know when we did get that presentation from our taxpayer or employee, I already had emailed the board the day of the vote because I felt there was a variance between expectations and execution. The one thing we talked about when the moderator did come to our table is that students would not be entering in the same door as the voters in the morning. That did not happen. And that did not happen without knowledge of this board, knowing that there was a change in plan. So for that reason, yes.
That did not happen without knowledge.
That did not happen without our knowledge. Okay, sorry. Davis had questions on my words. But essentially, they went in the same doors as the voters. That wasn't the plan. They were supposed to go further into our facilities and go into what's called the fishbowl. It's the further entrance of the building, and they would not have run into voters. They did. That was not something we expected. That was not something we wanted. And we were actually very clear that we weren't comfortable if that was to happen. That happened anyway, and we will be having further discussions about setting expectations and executing those expectations. We do need more discussion. It's not just the moderator we need to talk to because this is a town vote. We need to make sure our town council is a partner in this process for us. We do have a joint meeting coming up the 29th. I don't know if it's, there's time enough to discuss it, to add it to the agenda. But this didn't go as planned. I will tell people at home that in the afternoon, based upon feedback the district got about the morning drop-off, pickup was done the way that this board expected it to happen. Pickup did happen in the fishbowl. Students and voters did not get the opportunity to mingle, and it was done as planned. So, but we can't, we can't turn our back and expect, you know, not, you know, our guest, which our moderator and the voters are our guests, to take over and run the building because that's not their, that's not their choice. It's our, we are the governing body. It's our district. And we have to be, you know, responsible for what happens in it. And, you know, and that was unacceptable for us as well. We want you to know that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I have a couple. It's already been mentioned. We have the joint meeting coming up on the 29th with the council here at Town Hall. And I would also like to note, they probably regret that they picked tonight as the night, but we have a number of students who are working on their teaching certification in our company tonight who, as part of their coursework, needed to attend a school board meeting. Little did they know they would get the three and a half hour school board meeting. So thank you for hanging in there. And I hope that the full agenda was interesting and informative and helpful to your studies. And we wish you the best of luck. And that takes us to item number 14, New Business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Okay. Seeing none, I'll move on to item number 15, Committee Reports. Ms. Crowley.
Okay. I don't have much to report on. We're excited to start our new school year. And we're excited to also report that our sports team swept BG last week with a win in boys... our sports team swept BG last week with a win in boys soccer, football and volleyball as well. So it's a good week for Merrimack sports.
Thank you. Ms. Gualyumi.
Just a quick update on the budget committee. It met last Tuesday on September ninth. During that meeting, the, the purpose, the agenda item was to elect the chair who was, Stan Heinrich was elected as chair and Rick Barnes was elected as vice chair. The, also, there were two candidates presented for consideration of the open budget committee position. Two residents stepped forward and expressed interest. The first one is Mark Gomez Caseras and the second one is David Ilg. Currently, the, the chairman will be speaking with them to find out a time that they could come before the, the budget committee to be able to answer questions at, at which time one of those candidates would then be selected to fill the vacancy until election. That meeting will be combined with the review of last year's budget and that's what's to be expected for the next budget committee meeting with the date to be determined.
Great. Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, on September eleventh, so last Thursday, we had a Merrimack safeguard, the first one that we've had since June, I think it was. We don't know yet about the grant. I mean, everybody wanted to know. I believe they have to know by the end of the month what it is. As of last Thursday, there might be knowledge out there today, I didn't hear about it, but so far, we don't know about the grant, whether it's there or not, so. There's a, a dr, prescription take-back day on Saturday, the twenty-seventh. Now, we know there's a drug, there's a box in the police station all the time, but there'll be a formal take-back day on the twenty-seventh that we'll be partaking in from a town. The red ribbon event for the middle school, I believe, is gonna be taking place this year. They're, they're gonna try to get helicopters, they can take a picture again from up, up high. They couldn't do it last year because of conflicts or whatever, so they're gonna try to do that this year. There's gonna be a seminar that's gonna be run on internet safety that's gonna be advertised for parents. And there's a lot of things, what we're trying to do, there's a lot of events that are going on around knowledge and information around different kinds of, you know, drug abuse, substance abuse. We're trying to put those all on the calendar, on the website. We're trying to get the website updated to reflect a lot of those dates, so that's sort of a work in progress. So when, when that happens, I'll let the board know, but that's it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Powell.
Last week, the healthcare cost containment committee met for its first meeting of the year. I unfortunately was out of town and not able to attend. I also didn't have a chance to get the preliminary notes on it, but I hope to have them by the time we meet the next time. And as was mentioned before, the EPEC committee met last week. Again, I was not there. I was one of the ones that did not skip work. I had to be out of town, unfortunately. And I haven't seen those notes either, but I think Mark pretty much covered everything that happened at that meeting.
Wonderful. Vice Chair Barnes.
Well, I'll give you the to-be-announced. We're gonna give you a save the date, October twenty-first at seven PM at the high school in the Little Theater. It's, the district parent group is actually supporting this event as well. It's a speaker that talks about education and anxiety. So helping students and families to cope with learning anxiety. So it doesn't have to be a special education thing. There are kids that get anxious about tests, those kind of things. They teach coping mechanisms and we discussed it at length at the district parent group and we're really looking forward to a very exciting and insightful event. So again, it'll be October twenty-first from seven to nine, the Little Theater at the high school. So if you have any questions, it should be on possibly the district calendar as well already, so. Tomorrow is the first board meeting of the School Boards Association, New Hampshire School Board Association, not the national one, but in Concord. So I will be there and I will be reporting back next meeting on that.
Is that meaning you declined the promotion?
I did.
Okay.
Girl's tired.
And this isn't really a committee report, but I neglected to mention before, I was contacted by Debbie Wolfline and Ken Johnson, who would like to begin the advise and confer process to discuss with us the employment arrangements under which our administrators work. I'm the lead on that with Ms. Gualyumi and so I will be in touch with them to set up the schedule and, and as well to set up time with the board to get input on that process. So that takes us now to item number sixteen, public comments on agenda items. Is there anyone looking to address the board on our, anything we've discussed? If so, please come to the standing microphone, state your name and address for the record. Might as well make the most of it while you're here, right? Just, I think, just speak into it.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Paul Wiegand. I live at Eight Short Street, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm currently attending NHTI for education. Actually, I was taking notes about this.
Sure?
It's red. Oh, there we go.
Much better.
All right. Should I? My name is Paul Wiegand. I live at Eight Short Street in Merrimack, New Hampshire. I am attending NHTI as a education student and I'm hoping to be a music teacher someday. Oops, I gotta stand kinda close. All right. I had a few concerns actually about the new road. I, a little bit, not upset, but frustrated that they couldn't be here for me to ask them a few questions about it. But I remember back in my time in the middle school, I was a student all the way through Merrimack School District. They actually, during the winter, they took the kids into the conservation area just to show them around. I think it was for kinda like a survival lesson kinda thing. And I think one of the roads passed right through the conservation area and I was a little bit concerned about if an emergency vehicle was going through there, that, that could potentially be a danger to the children that might be in the forest at those times. Also, they mentioned something about the emergent, the speeds being slowed down by the rotary and that was supposed to be kind of the, the point of it. But if that's the case, then the emergency vehicles will be slowed down as well, which is not what we're aiming for. Also, I was, I had a question if the buses, the staging area was also going to be considered public parking and if that might be an issue as well. Also, if there was only one outflow area of that whole area as well, so if the buses are coming in and then the parents are coming in as well, they all have to go out through just one area, whereas they're coming in through two, that might be an issue as well. And I think Vice Chair Shannon, you mentioned that the property value and depreciation around the area because of all that new traffic and stuff might be affected as well. Those are some concerns that I had about that. Also, I'm not sure this is gonna be, it's about the air filtration as well. I'm not sure if this would be affected at all by that, but I think, Carrie, you can actually back me up on this. Sometimes it really smells throughout all the halls. I remember broccoli being the one prominent smell throughout my years at MHS. And I'm not sure if the air filtration system had something to do with that as well, but just wanted to... And then actually, being a former band member at MHS, I had a few cringes when I was hearing the stuff about the track and field. I think my main thing about the field was that I'm personally very against the turf because, and, and I know it's all money-based and that's the big concern and I can completely understand that, but it's all also part of like the experience and also the cleats do tear up the turf really fast. And I can speak from experience after walking onto a field freshly destroyed by the football team, that it gets demolished and grass can grow back, but turf can't and it will have to be replaced after, you know, fifteen or so years, as you were saying. And I think the band, the band, just to correct Chairman, probably a gutsy move on my part, but...
Oh, I'm corrected all the time. Feel free.
The band doesn't usually practice on the, in the parking area, the lot. We actually practice on the lower field and then when we do get the chance, we like to practice as much as we can on the upper field, the actual football field. And we don't, we don't really use cleats at all, but we do walk a lot, a lot more probably than the football team does and we cover a lot, much larger ground. And I can say, if you're gonna ask anybody about the damage that we do, the Mrs. Cunningham would be the person to ask, so I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for a very informative time and I appreciate having us.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments. Very good. Anybody else looking to address the board under public comments? It would be hard to follow, Mr. Wiegand. Okay, if there are none, I will close public comments. We will take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Powell, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That motion carries five zero zero. The meeting is ended. Thank you, everyone.
...look different and address the issues that were of concern to people. If it's a rubber stamp, I totally agree. But if it's not, because if we can present it that way saying, okay, we...